Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, June 14th, beginning at 7:00 PM in Cahill Auditorium. We have, with the exception of Member Kent, we have all members present this evening. Member Kent will enact the Mullen Rule for any applicable hearings he's not able to listen in on this evening and be able to participate at the next meeting. Our first public hearing is not scheduled until 7:15. Do we need to make a motion to anything? Do we need to make a motion to get underway or anything like that?
Uh, no, we just opened up the hearing. I mean, opened up the meeting. Yeah, I know, because we're not on, at least we're on call and all that.
I think it's like the Zoom, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I'm trying to transition between what to do and what format.
Yeah, alright, thank you. We'll jump down to Old New Business section of our agenda. Let us just do an updated discussion on the master plan and also update while we have probably most audience members in attendance this evening. Also note the next master plan steering committee meeting date, which is on the agenda for Thursday, June 23rd at 7:00 in Cahill Auditorium. So, we did have a very well-attended community event on March 21st. It was a Saturday afternoon. We had a presentation by our consultant, which lasted about, what, probably about a half hour? And then we had stations set up around the room with lots of great feedback, which I know the consultant is going to be compiling and presenting, and we may even get some element of that presented to us at the meeting coming up in June. So, I encourage everyone to stay engaged, to attend. If you missed it and you still want to participate, there's going to be more community events, so don't feel like you missed out, but definitely make it a point to check it out. I don't know if Director Santucci-Razi would like to add anything? I know she's been very involved behind the scenes of these meetings.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And just quickly, also, we will be, we're working through the logistics, but we have reserved a table at Braintree Day, so we will be represented there as well to try to capture, again, as many people as we can, with some different activities and maybe a light survey. So, we will also be there, which is two days after our next meeting on Saturday, June 25th.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Awesome. We would also like to, while we have time, approve meeting minutes for our May meeting. Does anybody have any comments on those? If not, we just need a motion to approve them. So moved by Member Grove. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Alright, great. Director, do you think we have time for the minor modification?
Um, so, we do, Madam Chair. Rick Grady, who was representing Clean Hoppers, he had asked me what time to come, and I kind of wasn't, um, I probably didn't give him the best answer. I told him to come around 8:30, because I forgot how few things that we had and that we could get to it. It's up to the board, I can cover it, it's super straightforward, or if you want to wait till he gets here, that's up to you. But he is planning on coming.
Honestly, it doesn't matter, whatever you think.
Um, we can get it out of the way, and I can, um, I can send him a message that we approved it.
Alright. If there's any, I guess if there's any questions and we feel like we can't, we can wait until after.
Exactly. And just to, Mr. Grady is not here, correct? Okay. Um, so, if I may, very quickly, through the chair, there was a little letter and a sketch in your packet, along with an updated parking calculation. I did not even prepare a staff report, because this is so straightforward. The board approved the building last year, actually, two years ago. And there was a large open overhang area. I'm not sure if the board remembers that. They're just looking to close in the overhang. Connor and I went out last week and did a quick site visit, and it's very, very straightforward. I really don't even know how else to explain it, besides this small 30 by 20 area will now, instead of having a roof in two sides, it will have four sides and a roof. And they already have additional parking, so they don't even have to add more parking That's basically it.
Great, thank you. Member McComme, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no questions.
Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
No, none for me.
Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Alright, I also don't have any comments or questions, so we would need a motion to approve the minor modification.
I'll move to approve the minor modification for One Hill Avenue, Lot 9, Planning Board File 1909.
We have a motion by Member McComme. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Grove. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll be beginning the first public hearing this evening at 7:15. It will be 425 Commercial Street, so I don't know if the applicant wants to come, start setting up, if they have anything they'd like to set up, and then we'll get underway right You have a cat, I thought you were telling me a story about it, one day, and a fish, and a cat, which is water. I have one more, I have one minute till we get underway. I just wanted to ask a clarification question to the Director. In the absence of Member Kent this evening, if any of the projects, if any of the projects in our agenda go to vote, will Member Connolly be participating as a voting member this evening? Okay, great, thank you. Alright, take it away.
Good evening. Chair President Joyce, Frank Marinelli, members of the board, and I'm pleased to appear to see Landing Apartments. Landing Apartments is the owner of Landing 53, which is the-
Oh, yep, I was just thinking that. Sorry, got to read the notice into the record.
If I may, through the chair, notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 14, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, at 17, 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider an application from Landing Apartments LLC for special permit and site plan review. The project proposes to use 3,000 square feet of constructed retail space, known as Number 27 Commercial Street, for an animal clinic slash hospital. The property is 2.055 acres, has an address at 25 Commercial Street, is zoned Braintree, Weymouth Landing District, and is identified on Assessors Plan 3006 as Plot 12. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as the Board knows, in 2015, Landing Apartments was approved 172 residential units and 11,486 square feet of commercial space. And back when the new zoning, the Braintree-Weymouth Landing District, was adopted, people were incentivized to invest in the area by the new zoning, and P Wed grants also provided the infrastructure, the curbs, the land, the lighting, and so forth, to incentivize private investment. And fortunately for the town, Mr. Katson, who is here with us tonight, and his company invested in the landing, they were designated by the RFP for the purchase of some of the town land that went to comprising the Landing 53 project, which is only about two acres, but it's right next to commuter rail, as you all know. And that's pretty much the history, and the decision, as you know, is 15-11, which is part of the record, and that contained all of the requirements for building the building, the 172 units, and the 11,486 square feet, that, 3,000 of which is left, is currently vacant and existing. It's a brand-new space, it was brand-new approximately five years ago. It's been the biggest challenge of the development, to rent the commercial space, and I think anyone that does mixed-use development would tell you it's difficult to rent the commercial space. So, we're very fortunate to have Kristy DeAndrea and her company, which is Veterinary Urgent Care Center, VUCC. Kristy is also here with us this evening, and happy to answer any questions that the Board might have. The permit that we're seeking tonight is a special permit for the veterinary use, and Kristy's use is emergency-only, and you can see we've got the floor plan up here showing the exam rooms, the labs, the treatment areas for dogs, cats, pets. So, that is the special use permit that we're seeking this evening. As the Board knows, we started this process back in January or February, when we filed with the Town Council to basically say dog grooming is a use-by-right in the Landing District. Certainly, veterinary is less intense. Would the Planning Board consider petitioning to make it a special permit? The Planning Board joined the petition, along with 959 signers, for the proposed special permit use. And then we went to the Subcommittee of the Town Council, the Rules and Ordinances, in March, and they approved the change. And then we went to the full Town Council in April, and they also approved the change to allow us to come back to the Planning Board and seek the special permit, which is the purpose of tonight's hearing. And also, with our development team this evening, is David Kelly. David is the civil engineer who prepared the site plan. And also, Eli Katson is the property manager for the company, and Eli is here. And also, Dan Dumais. Dan is with MDM Transportation, who filed the parking supply report that you have in the record. So, let me just say a word about Kristy and her company. Obviously, a woman-owned, and started a woman-owned business, deserves a lot of credit. She started in 2017. She graduated with her master's degree in veterinary medicine from Tufts University, and she has now opened veterinary emergency care clinics in Plymouth, Quincy, and Eastern, Northeastern. So, this particular, and by the way, the business serves primarily dogs and cats. You can go online at veturgentcare.com and see everything about her urgent care business, and she's going to tell you what she does in a few paragraphs this evening. But basically, the location at 291 Quincy Avenue in Quincy, which is a small plaza just to the north of the Falls, where Roach Brothers used to be, there's a small plaza on the left side of Quincy Avenue. So, that's where she is currently, and she would move from there and take the final 3,000 square feet of commercial space. We don't like to see a vacant in this town. We like to see space that's built out, and is brand-new, and has never been occupied. And this is not an intense use, as has been concluded by the MDM Parking Supply Report, which you have in the record. The use here, that is proposed, the VUCC use, is approximately, I'm reading from page one of the MDM reports dated May 23rd, it's approximately seven fewer vehicle trips during the weekday morning, nine fewer trips during the weekday evening peak hour, and nine fewer vehicle trips on Saturday midday than in allowed, as-of-right, retail use, which is what the use of the 11,486 approved commercial space was in 2015. And then it goes further on the report, which says, "The incremental traffic associated with proposed veterinary use will result in a reduction in vehicular activity compared to the permitted retail use, resulting in improved operating conditions at the municipal lot and driveways during the peak hours. Furthermore, the actual build-out of the Landing project was observed to generate 45% to 50% fewer peak hour trips than envisioned through the permitting process." So, the project came in at 45, in its entirety, 45 to 50% less vehicle trips than were projected in 2015, and then you have on top of that a veterinary, really, a particular destination use, which is less vehicle trips, less intense, than your by-right retail uses that could move in tomorrow without any kind of special permit. So, the conclusion of that report on page 10 is, in summary, "The conversion of permitted retail space to veterinary facility is expected to result in a reduction of vehicle trips during the peak hours. The actual build-out of the Landing was observed to generate 45 to 50% fewer vehicle, peak hour vehicle trips than envisioned through the permitting process." And goes on to say, "Further, the observed parking demand on a Saturday is low except for Saturday evening. Consequently, the proposed conversion will result in improved operating conditions compared to the permitted project at the municipal parking lot adjacent to the Braintree Landing, as well as the adjacent intersections." And it says that, "Under the conditions with the veterinary clinic space, there will continue to be parking surplus." So, not only are we finally filling the last 3,000 square feet after a long slog with trying to rent commercial space, River Shed is one of the tenants in the commercial space, as well as Keller Williams, which took space as a middle unit. And so, this is very good for the town, it's very good for Kristy's business. She will close the Quincy location if the special permit is approved here. How will the VUCC operate? So, the operational plan, you have the floor plan up there on the screen, and it's pretty self-explanatory in terms of the layout with the exam rooms, and the treatment, and radiology, and surgery, and so forth. When, if we could go to the next slide, which shows the site, a patron of VUCC will pull in and go around the back of the building, and there's a loading space where the restaurant is, right there, and you will pull in there, and it's pretty much drop-off pickup. So, you'll get out of your car with your pet, and you'll walk along the walkway that we installed in 2015, and you'll come up through the oxway, and you'll make a right, and you'll go right through, right into the front door of the 3,000 square feet. So, basically, you get out of your car, walk southerly, and make a right at Commercial Street, and walk right in the front door with your pet for emergency treatment. So, that's the operational plan. We believe that, as stated in the staff report that Ms. Santucci provided to the Board, this use meets so many of the purposes of the Landing zoning district. When it was adopted, the purpose of that district, Section 615, was to create residential density to support the need for housing and promote small businesses like Kristy's small business. And currently, for example, in the BWLD, the Landing District, a medical clinic, which is a more intense use, would be allowed by special permit. And as we said, you know, even dog grooming would be allowed by right, which is more intense. So, for all of those reasons, we would respectfully request approval of the use special permit to allow Kristy's business to occupy the final 3,000 square feet of commercial space at Landing 53. Just in summary, we read the staff report, we know that Ms. Santucci-Razi would like to get an as-built plan submitted for the project in chief that goes back seven years. Construction was probably five years concluded. But there is some landscaping that needs to occur with the daylighting project on the way, and Weymouth has to do some landscaping. We would like that landscaping to take place before we submit the as-built plan. So, we would, if there is a condition to submit an as-built plan, we would like it to be tied to the completion of the landscaping by the town of Weymouth, and then we will, David Kelly will get the as-built plan into the Board. There was a question on the dumpster, and, you know, with River Shed, we're locating the dumpster as shown on the site plan, so David can explain where that is going, if there's any question on that. And on parking, we have the same parking layout that was approved in 2015. So, again, this is a built-out project. It is unusual to say with a use special permit that you go back and, we're not building anything, we're just occupying. So, respectfully, you know, we would ask the Board to keep that in mind. We're just looking for a use special permit to occupy, and the infrastructure, the building, the parking, is all approved, and is approved as-of-right for retail occupancy. So, with that, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Our team is here, and if Kristy wants to say a few words, we'd love to have her speak with the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Kristy DeAndrea. I'm a veterinarian and the founder of Veterinary Urgent Care Centers. I just have one quick clarification that I think might clear up some issues about urgent care versus emergency care. Frank did a very excellent thorough presentation, but I do want to clarify that we offer urgent care services. Many people are not familiar with the difference between urgent care and emergency care in the veterinary medical field. That's because of you. I was the second one in the US to develop this type of model in the veterinary industry. If you have pets, you understand why we need this. We're pretty backed up everywhere. The difference between emergency care and urgent care in the veterinary medical field is essentially just exactly what it sounds like. If you would go to your doctor, and you couldn't get in, you had a cough, cold, sneeze, had to be tested for COVID, your kid needed a PE physical, those are the types of things that you would go into the urgent care for. You hurt your knee and you're still walking on it. If you're going to do a car accident, probably not going to go to the urgent care, you're going to go to the emergency hospital. So, if you're thinking that we're similar to the VCA in Weymouth, we're very, very different. The VCA in Weymouth is there for patients who cannot walk, severe patient cases that need emergency surgeries, things that need overnight care. With regard to the parking situation, I don't want you guys to think there's going to be people dragging bleeding dogs up the sidewalk. That's typically not what we would see. That being said, if you do have pets, you understand that there is a large demand for patients who need care. They got bit at the dog park, they're vomiting, having some diarrhea, you know, issues like that, that occur with your pets, that you want your vet to take a look at. That's what we're here for. I started the urgent care in Quincy. We have a very small space. It was my very first space. I started it with myself and five employees. We now have three locations and are in desperate need of a much larger space. At this time, right now, we unfortunately had to permanently remodel our Quincy location due to the increased demands during COVID. While our waiting room was closed, we desperately needed that space, so we actually made a new treatment center. So, we unfortunately, in the Quincy Hospital, the Quincy location cannot accept patients into the clinic right now, which is, obviously, as pet owners, you want to be there with your kids, your babies, and we can't let people in the doors right now, because we made that space a second treatment room to treat more patients. We're now running three doctors out of there, and it's pretty busy. So, we are in desperate need of a larger space. We've been going through this process for a while, so we hope that we're getting towards the finish line. If there's any questions I can answer for you, I think Frank did a very good job about our operations. Some of the other towns that we've been in have had questions about, you know, will we do overnight boarding? The answer is no. Will we have barking dogs late at night? The answer is no. If I have any other questions about our operations I can answer, I'm more than happy to. Um, that being said, if you do have pets, you understand that there is a, a large demand for patients who need care. They got bit at the dog park, they're vomiting, having some diarrhea, you know, issues like that, that occur with your pets that you want your vet to take a look at. That's what we're here for. Um, I started the urgent care in Quincy. Uh, we have a very, very small space. It was my very first space. I started it with myself and five employees. We now have three locations and are in desperate need of a much larger space. Um, at this time right now, um, we unfortunately had to re- permanently remodel our Quincy location due to the increased demands during COVID. Um, while our waiting room was closed, we desperately needed that space, so we actually made a new treatment center. So we unfortunately, in the Quincy Hospital, um, the Quincy location cannot accept patients into the clinic right now, which is, obviously, as pet owners, you want to be there with your kids, your babies. Um, and we can't let people in the doors right now because we, we, we made that space a second treatment room to treat more patients. Uh, we're now running three doctors out of there, um, and it's, it's pretty busy. So we are in desperate need of a larger space. We've been going through, um, this process for a while, so we hope that we're getting towards the finish line. Um, if there's any questions I can answer for you, I think Frank did a very good job about our operations. Um, uh, some of the other towns that we've been in have had questions about, you know, will we do overnight boarding? The answer is no. Um, will we have barking dogs, um, late at night? The answer is no. Um, if I have any other questions about our operations I can answer, I'm more than happy to. What questions do you have for me?
Great, thank you. Um, I guess initially, just while you're up here, to not make you come up again, but necessarily, but Member McConaughey, do you have any comment, any questions, um, for Christie while she's up here?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. DeAndrea, is that what it is?
Doctor DeAndrea, yes.
Doctor.
Or Christie's perfectly fine.
I'll call you doctor. You can call me Mr. McConaughey. Um, so the, your spot in Quincy, how much smaller is it than the three thou- three thousand square feet that is at the Landing Apartments?
It's half the size.
Half the size, okay. So, um, you have th- three other doctors now, um, and are you going to be expanding that? So, so you go from X number of, uh, exams or whatever to, are you going to double or triple?
No, so the model's pretty set at this point. So, um, we've decided that smaller spaces, so I, I do have a partner at this time. Um, I currently have, like I said, three operations and I actually have three additional under contract right now in addition to this one. Um, but the model is, is stable. Um, we run one doctor at a time. Uh, the hours are nine AM to four PM and three PM to ten PM and eleven to six on Sunday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, the model is one doctor, four technicians, two front office workers. Um, that is our model. It keeps our costs where we want them to be and sees as many patients as we can effectively treat without overloading our staff and decreasing our quality of patient care.
Good, thank you very much. Uh, and, uh, just based on, on your current, um, usage, when do you see the highest volumes?
Honestly, we're kind of busy all the time.
Okay.
But I think the, um, the, um, we had a gentleman do a parking assessment. Um, you can see our needs, um, pretty reasonable.
Okay, so pretty, pretty steady once you open up the doors?
Yeah, we're pretty steady once we open up the doors.
Is it a appointment or do you, is it a drop-in?
We're walk-in only.
Walk-in only?
So, we have an, so much like, again, if any of you have ever visited a Convenient M D or Health Express, um, we actually use the same, uh, or a P M Pediatrics, um, for the parents in the room. Um, there, it's an online booking system. So you can, you can register ahead, um, or you can just walk in and be placed in the queue to be seen.
Got it, okay. Um, I was going to ask Mr. Marinelli, but since you're up here and you likely know. So, um, he described the operational plan as, uh, you know, people, uh, are they parking there or are they just simply going to drop off?
That's actually a great, that's actually another point that I wanted to bring up. So in the way that we transitioned, uh, we pivoted during COVID to make it mainly a drop-off, um, type of operation. We can actually see more patients at a, at a drop-off operation. I would say probably seventy-five to eighty percent of our clients still choose to drop off. Um, there's a small percentage that prefer to be in the room with their pets, but the overwhelming majority of clients are busy with their own lives and, and to drop their pet off and go, I mean, they can do a couple of things, right? They can go get their nails done, or they can go for a drink, or go pick their kids up and come back. Um, they're finding it very convenient to just kind of come in and out. Um, it's working in the Quincy location, um, as well as the Easton and the Plymouth locations as well. Both of those spots, uh, Easton only has three exam rooms and Plymouth only has four.
Okay, well, I, I was actually asking more about when, um, when Mr. Marinelli described the area that the, that people are going to drive up to.
No.
Are there parking spots there or is that just simply drop-off?
So, so for example, um, I know that the parking is a major concern in this area. Um, you know, we, I have a partner who has several clinics in, um, in New York City. Um, it's the same model. Um, you know, people don't mind walking from a little ways away to just bring their pet in. Um, cats and small dogs are easy enough to carry and we walk our dogs to go to the bathroom. So, walking from behind the building to the front to bring them into the clinic is typically, I, I wouldn't expect it would be an issue.
Okay. And I notice in the, uh, conditions that there is currently no signage. I, I assume that the signage is going to be done, uh, before this is operational?
So, I would have to partner with the developer on that, but we have a longstanding relationship. I, I don't see any issues with us making clear signage on where people are to park and more than happy to work with the town on, uh, doing our best to alleviate the parking problem and not add to it.
That's wonderful. Thank you, doctor.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Um, Member Crowe, do you have any comments specifically for, um, the applicant right now?
I don't have any questions. Great, sounds like a great business model and it's, um, exciting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time today. Is there anything else I can do for you guys?
Member Connolly, do you have any, anything you'd like to ask the applicant before we jump into some other stuff?
I had a question about the surgery suite. You said that it was urgent care, so how does that fit into the model?
Yes, so in Quincy, I specifically did not put a surgery suite in. Um, however, um, I'm capable of doing surgery and they just can't help it when they need help. Um, so basically how it works is, it's difficult to describe, but there are certain surgeries that are relatively easy. Um, while they're technically difficult, I've done a number of them, I can do them in twenty or thirty minutes. Um, so it's easy enough for me to have my technicians and nurses, um, sedate the patient and assess eyes, I can perform the surgery, make sure the patient's awake and stable. Uh, but we have a working relationship with V C A. Um, so we do transport them to V C A for overnight monitoring. Um, but with the E Rs, I can, I don't know if you guys have pets, but, uh, my partners at V C A, we are looking at six-hour wait times. If a patient, like a young puppy, has a foreign body, um, you know, that six hours in the waiting room can really be life or death for someone's puppy. Um, and quite frankly, if I have the tools that I need, it's thirty to forty-five minutes and it, it really is life-saving.
And then the follow-up question I had was about the radiology suite.
Yep.
How is that contained?
Yes, so, um, we work with Alara Physics. So, Alara Physics is a company that actually does our radiation safety plans and we're registered with the state. Um, so they actually get a, um, uh, they, they do a, um, an assessment of, um, all of the, the ceiling, the floor, the, the radiology rooms, um, if lead-lined, uh, doors or drywall are needed, uh, we just order those in accordance with the, um, the, uh, safety requirements.
Thank you.
Sure.
Member Grove, do you have any comments specifically for the applicant?
Is your facility, are there residents above your facility?
Currently, no, but there obviously would be in this location, yes.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering if any consideration in the exam rooms has been given for sound?
Yes, so, um, all of our, so all of our goal's by standard go to the deck and, um, they are soundproofed, um, with the top-quality material. Uh, we are under contract with another similar type of space in Dedham, Legacy Place. Uh, so we will have, uh, um, people above our clinic at that place as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for hearing us today, guys, we appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Um, if I could just ask the director to kind of give a brief overview of the staff report and just kind of give an outline of where the planning department has been working with the applicant and where we are at with it?
Um, sure, Madam Chair. So, um, the staff report's fairly lengthy. Again, wanted to make sure I just hit on the various sections, um, in the Braintree, Waymouth Landing, um, ordinance. And as you can see, most of the comments are back to the, uh, decision and plans for the, uh, construction of the building, which is fifteen-eleven. Um, the first comment, um, that needs to be taken care of is on page five. I think Frank had mentioned something about, um, trash. The site plans show an area, we require the area to be enclosed. There's two dumpsters out in the parking lot, just kind of there, um, not orderly, not enclosed, and frankly, taking up, uh, parking spaces. So that should be completed in accordance with the plans. Um, the landscaping, um, I, I had recalled, um, from the previous director that that was one of the, sort of the last items, as well as the Conservation Commission. Frank had mentioned, uh, this evening that they were waiting on the daylight. Um, we are in the Landing District. Again, all signage is subject to administrative site plan review. Um, the applicant is here in front of the planning board now, so we can wrap that signage into any approvals that are granted. So that should be submitted to, um, so they don't have to come back again. Um, again, noting the same sort of comments under a different section. Um, and then the majority of the rest of my comments are related to parking. And I did question the space, um, the space that Frank had highlighted, um, on the drawings is going to be the new loading space. That space is already there. So what does that space do now? Who uses that space? And is this going to work? Is the proposed use, um, by the animal hospital going to be, you know, jive with how it's being used now? I, I'm not sure how it's being used. Um, do you have that information, Attorney Marinelli? Is that a, a general sort of drop-off or?
I've taken photos of the entire area, including the vacant M B T A lots, which the town should work on making arrangements for. There's hundreds of spaces in those lots that are available. That particular space, I have not seen.
Okay.
A car in it.
Okay. I, I haven't either. I just, I, I, as we, as we go through this process, um, and Mr. McConaughey had mentioned some signage, maybe we drop off here and then kind of, we just, I don't want, the drive aisle is only about fifteen feet wide, so we just want to make sure that if there's a car there and they're making a drop-off, that they can get out quickly and we don't end up with a, a backing up and sort of juggling situation. It does get fairly tight, um, in that section. And then, like I had said previously, uh, the majority of my comments are related to parking. Um, there's still some additional information that needs to be submitted. Mr. Catherine had shared some information with me, um, after or the day of the hearing or something when we were doing the rezoning, um, and changing the use table. And those materials were not submitted as part of this application. Um, anything that wants to be considered as part of this application should be filed with this application. We don't pull out materials and put them in other people's, uh, or other files, I should say. So there's some more information that needs to be submitted. Uh, M D M did complete a parking study and analysis, and I think that that needs a second set of eyes and they need to go back and take a look at that. Um, the analysis was done with, on the assumption that there's seventy-six parking spaces out there. So they've counted all the parking spaces in Waymouth as well. And while in reality, there may be people that are going in Waymouth, that are parking in Braintree and Braintree and vice versa, however, I do not feel it's appropriate to analyze the parking demands of this particular use in utilizing the spaces in the other communities. So the parking demand is up there. I mean, I, I don't think that it's something, um, that, that shouldn't be, uh, vetted properly. Uh, but we do have the report from M D M. Uh, Dan is here this evening. I don't know if he's going to be presenting this, but I would, uh, quickly just draw people's attentions to figure four and five. Uh, and you can see, um, the number of spaces and the demands. And I was, uh, I had tried to look online, I was busy today preparing for a couple other things. Uh, I, I do not believe any of the retail in Waymouth has been occupied yet.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if any of the units have been occupied yet. So I'm trying to get an understanding of, if, if there's anything on that particular side that would be using, um, these parking spaces at this particular time. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Um, I guess with regards to that, the staff report, I think, had noted, um, six versus twelve spaces for the use. What, what is the, um, what is the requirement that the applicant is saying for the number of spaces?
So the retail would have been six.
Yes.
Um, and the animal, um, hospital clinic requires twelve. And I, I just want to make one additional comment and distincting. There's, there's no concerns about trip generation. They did do monitoring. The trip generation is, is not a concern whatsoever. This is, is purely related to parking demand and supply.
Seems like maybe you're going to be answering my question.
I'm going to try.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. David Kelly with Kelly Engineering Group, nice to see you again. Um, so this chart, and we will submit it, Melissa's correct, we just want to, and, and you may have portions of this already in your file, but we'll, we'll, we'll provide this to you clearly. This is in, really to address the staff report and what's going on out there relative to parking. And, and I can comment a little bit on the dumpster in a moment as well. But, uh, what's shown here is the, is the inventory. And so the first thing is, it's true that for the purposes of the M D M parking inventory analysis, that they looked at the entire property. In fact, if you were to walk out there, I don't think you'd be able to tell where the property line is and neither would anybody else using the property. So they did a full analysis of the property and it is true that that, uh, small retail space, um, below Mr. DeLeguiz's property next door is not yet occupied or doesn't appear to be occupied. The building is just completed. Um, but, um, without getting into the, uh, parking inventory count, and M D M can certainly do that, what they found is at all times of the day, that that total inventory of parking space is underutilized. And, um, and, and that's without even talking about all the other parking spaces that are available in the Landing, including at the M B T A parking lot. But what I'd like to do is take you through the question of zoning and what's, uh, what's on the property and what may change as a result of this, uh, project. And nothing, just to tell you firstly, nothing will change as a result of the project. What has changed slightly is that those of you who've been down there will know that the town of Waymouth, working with Mr. DeLeguiz, have, have reconfigured the parking lot to actually make it more efficient at the back of the property. And I'm not sure if you've been down there. It's a pretty recent occurrence and, uh, it increases the parking inventory to the numbers, uh, that were represented in the, in the M D M report. So, um, the inventory on the site today, there's a hundred and ninety-eight parking spaces in the garage. There's actually three more, but two of them are utilized, you can see the notes on the right side of this chart. Uh, two of them are for the restaurant cooler, for the, um, uh, the river, Rivershed cooler, and one is, one is for general trash inside the building. Um, there are forty-seven surface spaces and that, there was a question in the staff report about how you counted those. And we counted them the very same way that we counted the spaces when the original plans were designed. And that was that any spaces that were partially in Braintree were counted as spaces. That was what was done in the, in the original permit, so to compare apples to apples. There are forty-seven surface spaces. So therefore, the total inventory on the Braintree side, including partial spaces, of two hundred and forty-five spaces. Um, so if we break down the surface lot, there are forty-seven spaces there, as I noted. Three of those, if you've been down there, you'll see a sign that they're reserved for the Landing staff, the management of the, of the apartment complex and, and, and the rest of the facility. And seven are reserved for Keller Williams, uh, at certain times, at certain times of the day. Um, but what, what that basically says is that there are thirty-seven available to the public. Thirty-seven, um, non, if you like, reserved spaces. Some of those reserved spaces are only for certain times of the day. Um, so now we go to the required numbers and there are a hundred and thirty-eight spaces required for the, for the apartments themselves. That's a hundred and seventy-two units at point eight spaces per unit. And as we noted a moment ago, there's a hundred and ninety-eight provided, um, actually in, in the garage. That leaves a surplus of sixty spaces in the garage, right? Simple math. Uh, if we go down to the retail and we break it down by use for restaurant, office ground floor, office mezzanine, and then of course, this proposed use, uh, using the ratios in the bylaw, the total amount is thirty-seven point nine-nine if we broke it down into percentages or into decimals, um, or thirty-eight, let's say. As we noted a moment ago, Keller Williams has, has, uh, three spaces. So therefore, the total, um, spaces required for the retail is thirty-five spaces. And as we noted, there are thirty-seven available. So, we checked the zoning box. We also checked the practical box based on the study that you've seen. And, um, so our conclusion is that it meets, meets the bylaw requirements for parking and, uh, and, and, and there's a practical parking inventory to provide, uh, provided on the property. I'll note one thing just for reference. As we looked at the bylaw, you can see that the, uh, the, the new requirement, uh, for veterinary is, is essentially four per thousand with a total of twelve spaces. But there was actually a, a category in, in your normal bylaw that has one per five hundred spaces for animal clinic. So, um, based on even that metric that was, that has been in the bylaw for many, many years, um, we'd have even more, we're, we're, we're conservatively estimating the number of parking spaces. And, and as the, uh, and as Christie has, has explained, this is not a place where people park, uh, for long periods of time. They park in the parking space or in that loading area that we identified and then they, uh, leave and come back later on. So, we're, our conclusion is that there isn't an issue from zoning standpoint and there isn't a practical issue. And I can certainly answer any questions on this chart that you see. Um, I will, I will note the dumpster question just to add some more color to that. And we, um, we acknowledge that the dumpsters are, are sort of vagrant dumpsters in the back of the parking lot. When the Rivershed came along, they needed additional dumpsters. The management placed two dumpsters for their use, but they placed them on the Waymouth side of the property line and of course, the, uh, town of Waymouth, when they And of course, the, uh, town of Waymus, when they read that the parking lot said you can't leave them there. So they've been temporarily moved to two spaces, um, or one or two spaces at the- at the back of the parking lot furthest from the building. We're right, we've identified an area, it's shown on the plan, where there'll be a concrete pad put in and a- a matching, uh, dumpster enclosure that- that matches the, uh, the vinyl fence and gated area that's currently out there. So it'll be an attractive area. Um, so that- that's that question. And then just to add some final information for the board's information on the question of landscaping and- and closeout of this project, we're anxious to close it out. It's been a kind of a millstone around our neck in the office so that we don't forget it and Josh's, uh, Josh's neck as well. The- the board is actually holding a bond for seventy-eight thousand dollars on the project. And, uh, the last item which we've been- we've been working with the town of Waymus for the last two years is for them to finish the daylighting project so that we can finish the limited landscaping that's needed. There's a landscaping plan that was prepared specifically for the Conservation Commission in two thousand twenty. We're ready to enact it. We've asked for their patience so that when the daylighting work is- is- is being completed, it doesn't wreck the landscape that's put in, and they- they, uh, they have been patient. So we're- our hope is to finish it. I checked today with Kate Marshall of the town of Waymus, and she told me that because of the time of year, they're going to wait until September to finish the work. And they, what has held them up is that they were waiting for Mr. DeLegus to finish his project. So hopefully that checks each of the sort of hanging questions that are out there, and I can certainly stay here and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. So there's twelve spaces proposed for the veterinary clinic?
Twelve by zoning, that's correct.
And how many are you saying that you need? Or is that, that's by zoning?
That's by zoning.
Yeah, okay, okay.
What we're saying is that there's more spaces than were originally required, uh, by- by- by the permits issued and more practical spaces.
Okay. And you mentioned, um, when you were doing the count of the spaces in the parking garage, those are only for residents of the building park in the garage, is that correct?
Except for the spaces being used for coolers for the, uh, for the rivershed. And also, um, is there Keller Williams parking lot? Yeah, there's three spaces, is that correct? Three spaces for the management folks that Keller Williams within, that are identified in the parking lot. So they have passes to get in there.
Okay.
But essentially, yes, it's all for the apartments.
Do you anticipate that the employees of the veterinary clinic would have access or use any of the spaces in the garage? Or, you had just mentioned like a surplus of spaces. I didn't know if those were actually surplus or just counted.
There's surplus based on zoning, but my understanding is there's a lot of demand for the parking within the garage. People would second cars and people that don't use their cars much because they can take the train.
Okay. And how many, um, how many employees, is there like a typical number of employees at the veterinary clinic at one time? You just have to come up to the mic, sorry. Get your steps in.
Uh, typically, seven per seven-hour shift. So that nine to four, three to ten, and eleven to six. So typically, seven employees.
Okay.
Um, but we've had conversations with the management about having our employees park in the commuter lot. And to my understanding, there's ample parking in that area.
Yeah, I'm not from, I'm not familiar with how that all works, but, um, yeah. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, and just a reminder, this is a public hearing. So if there is anybody from the public who would like to come up and ask any questions or, um, provide any, ask any questions or provide any comments, please feel free to come up. Um, just can come up to the podium. Um, if, I'm not seeing any, so I think I'm going to just open it up to the board for any comments that members might have. Member McCallum, do you have any questions, comments?
Um, I had the same question you did, which was where are the employees going to park? But if they're going to park over there. So I would just ask the director, based on what you just heard, of course, we, um, I don't think Mr. Kelly provided us with that analysis. Um, thoughts on where we stand and cert-, you know, given what you mentioned initially about parking? Now, based on what you've seen, wh- what are your thoughts about the parking?
Um, my thoughts are the same as I explained earlier on. Um, and I- I- I welcome an opportunity to try to sit down, uh, with Mr. Catherine Connor. And I had met with him. Um, we had talked about the garage, what's going on with the garage, who's parking in there. What he had shared with us, uh, was different than what, uh, Mr. Kelly had shared today. So we really need to nail that down, um, who in fact is parking in there. Um, the parking table that was, um, represented here, again, I think, uh, the chairman talked about the sixty spaces and their surplus. The garage is- is locked. You can't go in there unless you have a, so those spaces are not accessible to anybody besides the people, um, in the buildings. And I've asked Mr. Catherine of, you know, who's got one space, who's got two spaces. There's quite a few people with two, and my understanding is he's keeping a waiting list as well. So, and again, it's- it's just a, it's a pretty simple and straightforward. We saw the numbers here today. If you want to count every space that's half and half, and I see what- what, uh, Mr. Kelly was talking about, if you look at sort of the town line and the spaces all the way up in the, up in the back corner. So the thirty-eight plus the, um, let me just get my right drawing out here. The thirty-eight, um, that are entirely in Braintree, uh, plus the nine that are half and half, gets you to forty-seven. And we have, um, peak demands that are over that. Um, we have some during the weekday. We have forty-nine, fifty-four, forty-eight. So that exceeds that number. And then Saturday, um, from about two PM to nine PM, uh, we're also exceeding that. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand. I'm just looking at the numbers, looking at the number of spaces. And if we have a demand of fifty-four and there's only forty-seven spots, you know, how is that exactly working out? And I guess that's where I'm having, uh, a difficult time understanding sort of the- the numbers.
Okay.
I think on those, on those numbers, and Dan can speak to this if you'd like to hear from him from MDM, but those are counters of entire activity. Uh, that's entire activity, uh, back there, which is not limited to landing fifty-three, uh, because the covenant with the town is- is the public parking as well. So, you know, I think we're working from, uh, from the backside of this, from seven years out, rather than saying the inducement and the incentivizing when this was built was to say, here's the parking, here's the building, we comply with zoning. That's what it, that's- that's what we did. And if you look at, for example, page seven, God bless you, page seven of the decision fifteen-eleven, it refers to everything that, you know, we've pointed out tonight. We- we meet the parking for the building, we meet the parking for the project. When you get seven years out and you're talking subjectively about what somebody feels about the landing and parking down the landing, we're not required to solve every problem, uh, in the landing. And by the way, there are literally, I- I mean, we photographed it in- in January, in November, in March. Those MBTA lots are, somebody from the town should try to make an arrangement with the MBTA, whether it's somebody from the council or the mayor's office or wherever. Because there are, in the front lot, there's eighty-five spaces on Quincy Avenue. And, you know, every time I've been down there, it's, there's been ten to fifteen that have been used. And- and these are during normal business hours, not on Sundays and not on vacations or holidays. And then in the back lot, there's a hu- another hundred and eighty-three, uh, spaces. And MAPC inventoried all of this, um, and- and has, you know, there were, there are like, when you count all of the spaces and the on-street spaces, there were over a thousand spaces, uh, in- in the area. So we're looking for a use- a use special permit to occupy the final three thousand square feet. Really, that's what- what this is about. And the infrastructure and the parking that was provided as part of this development was all approved. And a retail use, which is more intense under the expert report of MDM, could occupy by right. So I think we really have to keep things in perspective. I understand the desire to try to get this or that or try, but really, we're talking about one user here. And her- her numbers are- are significantly less, according to the expert report, than- than a, than a buy-right retail use that could go in there tomorrow.
Well, just from my part, Mr. Marinelli, I appreciate comments about the MBTA. I think we covered that, you know, years ago when this project was coming up, and no- nothing's been done. But of course, this project has to- has to be on its, uh, standalone basis. So I kind of agree with the director. Let's- let's just wrap up, um, you know, the analysis and the parking and make sure that, uh, as you know, it's all tight down there. Uh, let's just make sure that it all works, so.
Yeah, by the way, the- the twelve spaces, uh, substituting for the six was just adopted last year. Our project, our development is two thousand fifteen. So, you know, there are some pre-existing circumstances in terms of using the retail. Uh, I think- I think what Mr. Kelly presented was a balanced site in terms of- of parking. And I'm not sure what- what more we can do within the constraints of the property. And, uh, you know, there is- there is plenty of parking down there. When you look at the MBTA lots and the vacancy, and it's a sea of asphalt that's available, um, day in, day out.
Well, again, that's not part of this project, so.
Well, well, but- but I'm-
You know, it- it's a nice spot, and maybe at some point that gets done. But as I mentioned, you know, this project needs to stand on its own.
And it does.
And I- I, yeah, I'm not, I'm saying that.
That was my point.
But now we have a chance. We have a real client coming in. We know what some of the numbers are. Uh, I happen to agree with the director. Let's just, let's just take a- a look at it and- and finish it off. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. I just had a follow-up question regarding the counts, um, and the surplus spaces noted. When we had, um, and in, when this project moved through the planning board, was it always the intent that the parking garage would be exclusively for residents? Um, and it was at point eight spaces per resident?
Yeah, it was point eight, which is why it's a hundred and thirty-eight spaces required for a hundred and seventy-two units. And there is a hundred and ninety-eight parking space garage. Actually, two oh-one was the ones that were deducted per Mr. Kelly's chart. So, um-
So, so you, so-
But there was no requirement to provide those to anyone other than the residents?
Yeah, I don't recall. That's why I was just asking if there was a commitment either one way or the other to say that the, uh, because there always would have been access spaces in the garage because you only needed so many spaces. So I guess the surplus spaces have been good in that they're allocated only to the residents and you can charge a fee for more than that point eight spaces. So I, I'm, I was just curious if that was something that was, um, either part of the conditional work when it was originally kind of permitted?
Yeah, there was, there was nothing that said that.
One way or the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't recall, so I was just curious. Um, Member Crowell, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. I, I think looking at the parking makes sense. I would have concerns about requiring the applicant to comply with parking in a lot that is also, and I'm saying this without knowing the full background, but if this is a beautiful lot that other parties are allowed to park in and then requiring the parking to be there, where this is a site that crosses two towns. I, I mean, I think I- I get the argument that you're making. I- I would like to take a look at the table and- and have a chance to review that. Um, I do have a separate question on parking. That drop-off spaces down by Alserape, is that existing or is that proposed?
It's there. Yeah, it's there.
Yeah, that- that's an area that's striped out so that nobody can park there too long because that's, uh, where the dumpsters are accessed.
Okay.
For the, for the theory being that those aren't accessed during regular business hours.
Right. Yeah, I've walked by there a few times to get my margarita and dinner, and I never noticed it. It seems like that would cause more problems than it would solve by having a drop-off space down there and requiring people to try to turn around or back all the way out. And so my question is whether it's possible to give up one of the spaces. Uh, it looks like there's, there might be a non-handicapped space next to the Keller Williams or one of the property management spaces and- and noting that as a drop-off only space instead.
My- my thoughts are that- that there's, um, you know, there's adequate parking out here. And so operationally, if that becomes a problem, you can- you can make a three-point turn and get back out, or you can back out, um, from that space. But presumably, people, whether we tell them or not, they're going to drive down there and get out, put their blinkers on and get out for the three or four minutes it takes to take their pet up to the front door. Um, so, um, the point, I think, is that operationally, there is room in the parking lot and- and presumably, a lot of people will park there, especially if they want to spend a little more time in the clinic.
Okay, thank you for that response. I don't have any other questions. Okay, great. Um, Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I just want to step back for a second. Uh, Mr. Marinelli, I just wanted to, uh, well, I was wondering if there'd been any contact with the Braintree Board of Health about the medical waste and to make sure that it's not, you know, combined somehow with the other waste.
Yes, Christie can answer that.
Hi, everyone, it's me again. Um, so, yes, we have a contract with Advo Waste Services that handles our medical waste for all of our practices, and it's obviously animal waste and not human. So it's subject to different laws.
Okay, so it's picked up internally?
Uh, correct.
Thank you.
Did you have anything further, Member Grove?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, I had a comment. Uh, I made a site visit over the weekend, and I think that the public parking could be more clearly indicated. It is, um, there is signage, it's high, and it's not really indicating, um, what the extent of it is. So you can't tell if it's a small section that's immediate to the sign. So I think it would be helpful, um, particularly to the families that were bringing their pets, um, to know where it is that they should park.
Yeah.
I- I touched on that, if I may, Madam Chair, in the staff report. They're up really high and they say like something to one AM. Those ones, yeah.
It just looks like you're going to get towed if you park in most of the spaces. So it's, it's, as a person coming to the space and unfamiliar with it, it may not be as clear as where you could park and not be towed. Um, and I think in the director's report, she had noted, um, that signage could be reviewed and approved as part of this site plan review. So do you, and does the applicant anticipate presenting signage to us for this, as part of this?
Yeah, I think so. So, um, we typically work with ID sign locally. Uh, they do all of our signage. I'm meeting with him this week, so I'm more than happy to bring him out to Braintree and, um, uh, have him put together a sign proposal for you. Just, you know, um, the majority of our, um, online appointments are booked through an online system, so we send text messages to clients. FYI, we can certainly send clients a text message that does give them parking directions with a PIN draw. So we can do that as well, if- if it would alleviate some of the concerns.
Great. Did you have any other comments or questions? Great, thank you. Um, I just had a question with regards to the drop-off space. There's like that white vinyl enclosure with a gate. What is in there? Is that a dump, is that like a dumpster? Is it just storage for the building? Like, what is?
Yes, dumpster.
A dumpster, yeah. Um, okay. Uh, all right, so is there anybody from the public that wishes to come up and ask any questions? Not seeing anybody. Um, it sounds like the, um, there may be some items to continue to work towards, um, and the development of some draft conditions, um, that we could potentially review. I think we also need to figure out the as-built timing. It sounds like if this were to move before an as-built approval, I don't know the logistics of that, but we would have to figure that out as part of it. And it sounds like, um, it sounds like a- a great business use, but maybe going to be held up with landscaping, so we can see if we can work through that. But we would be looking to, um, continue this, I believe. Um, would it be the July, the July planning board meeting?
It's, uh, July twelfth, Madam Chair.
July twelfth or fourteenth?
It says fourteenth in the staff report.
Does it?
But, let me double check. It's July twelfth, yes.
Yep, all right. So, um- So, um, Chair Lentretina motioned to continue this application to the July twelfth meeting at seven fifteen. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Member Grove. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, we will see you in July. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda this evening is a continued public hearing for Town Council Order twenty-two dash zero twelve, which is a zoning ordinance text amendment with regards to inclusionary housing. This matter has, um, been continued for a couple of meetings here. So I don't know if, um, someone from the mayor's office or the planning department wants to provide an update. I don't know if we're taking testimony on this this evening.
Um, Madam Chair, very quickly, um, I don't know if I'd call a testimony. Um, at the last meeting, we had talked about, um, getting together with developers, um, and I just haven't had a chance to do that just yet. So, um, it's on my schedule to do before the next meeting. Um, and I will, uh, do my best to coordinate that and hopefully get people to attend and report back to the board.
Great, thank you very much. So Chair Lentretina motioned to continue this to the July four, uh, July twelfth. What did I just say? Yeah, July twelfth at seven fifteen. Motion by Member Grove, do I have a second? Second by Member McComme. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? All right, till next time. The next item on our agenda this evening is a continued public hearing for Banner Park, sixty Colombian Street. Special permit and site plan review, Banner Park Campus LLC is the applicant this evening and I believe will be updating us on some goings-on between our last meeting. I also have two notes, um, which, after the update, I'll read into the record, um, both from the mayor's office and, um, the district counselor on the Braintree side, uh, Counselor Mackin. So if you could just, um, maybe give us an update on, I know there's been some public hearings, um, or not public hearings, maybe more community meetings. I think our district coun, the district counselor, six, uh, Counselor Mackin had hosted one. So if you just want to give an update on kind of what's been going on since the last meeting, that'd be great.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, Brian Palmucci, on behalf of Banner Park Campus. Uh, good evening, uh, Chairwoman Joyce and members of the board. Uh, this is our third appearance before you, uh, and we've, we've covered a lot of ground over that time, both in the meetings and outside of the meetings. Uh, after, and so I just kind of want to bring us up to speed here and tell you where we're at. After the initial presentation, we heard comments from many Waymouth residents, um, who live in the area. And we sought to address those concerns to lessen the impact to them. Uh, after our second presentation, we, or at our second presentation before you, we presented, uh, modified plans that reflected changes to alleviate the impact on those Waymouth residents. Uh, we removed a large tractor-trailer parking area. We relocated the mechanical equipment on the roof away from them. And we agreed to install a visual and sound barrier. Uh, we heard from the Waymouth neighbors again, uh, at that meeting and the board, um, specifically Member Connolly, asked us to make sure that we don't come back here without having had a community meeting with them. Um, so we have done that. Uh, on May twenty-third, we participated in a, in a very well-attended community meeting, uh, hosted by the Waymouth Planning Director. Uh, it was suggested at that meeting, uh, a lot of suggestions were made, but, uh, one particular suggestion that struck us was, uh, that, that we found to be reoccurring in our discussions, uh, with Waymouth folks is, um, it was suggested at that meeting that we examine the traffic impact of potential future uses of the site. And while we don't have any plans for doing anything else with the site, uh, we did take that into consideration, the concern, the kind of, um, uh, the concern about not knowing, right? So what we did is we, um, we've done that, we've, we've looked into it, we've studied it. And as a result, we've included an updated traffic assessment for review of the full life sciences uses across the site at both those buildings. Um, we'd always thought that if, you know, that, uh, it would be a warehouse, if there would ever be a life science use that wanted to go in there, we would come back for, um, for approval. Uh, but at this point, we have studied it and we've, we've updated the reports to reflect that in the application, to, to reflect that. Um, there are no changes to the footprints of either of the buildings, the two buildings, Building A and Building B. On May seventeenth, uh, we hosted a site walk with the Braintree and Waymouth Conservation Committee members, as well as several Waymouth residents who attended. Uh, we participated in a June ninth community meeting in Braintree hosted by Counselor Mackin, which was mostly made up of Waymouth residents, but of the, uh, few Braintree residents who were there, uh, the concerns expressed were traffic-related nearly entirely, um, which we believe can be mitigated through the mitigation, uh, that we would, we would perform relative to, uh, this approval. Uh, and if I could just say that the, the benefits to Braintree, uh, in terms of jobs, taxes, and preservation of approximately forty acres of open space, uh, far outweigh any of the negative impacts as those negative impacts can be mitigated. Uh, we had another Concom site visit earlier today. And we've also met with, uh, MEPA officials and we're starting the process of MEPA review. And we'll also be reaching out to, uh, Mass DOT as well, uh, to make sure that all of, uh, the necessary approvals are sought and reviews are, are, uh, conducted. Uh, we did receive the peer review reports that the, uh, from the reviewers that the town engaged, uh, and, as well as staff comments up to date. We believe that all of the items can be positively addressed. There's, it was nothing in any of the material we've received so far that seems like it will be, uh, very difficult for us to comply with or to, to make, uh, appropriate changes. And based on that input, we've undertaken some additional analysis, um, including, you know, soil testing and some additional traffic, uh, assessments. And tonight, what we'd like to do is just quickly walk through the current plans, uh, as a result of the work over the last several months. And I'll kick it over to Carlos, uh, who can walk through those. And then we'd be happy to entertain any questions that the, um, members may have.
Thank you, uh, Chairperson, members of the board. Carlos Sculty was civil and environmental consultant for the Civil Engineers on the project. Uh, and we won't spend too much time, uh, revisiting some of the items that we talked about the last hearing, uh, other than there has been a robust dialogue and a public involvement process in between the previous hearing and where we are today. Uh, so just walking through some of the elements here, just recapping the project. Uh, we have the two buildings, uh, with the development, Building A and Building B. A lot of the design revisions that we focused on, uh, and have been looking at. Uh, we're located around Building B, closest to the Tommy Marks residence. Uh.
Can you just, uh, maybe it's just my eyes. Can you just highlight those numbers, Carlos, that you, that you have in blue?
I'm having a little trouble with, uh, Mike's mouse here, so Mike, you have to help me out here. Sorry.
That's okay.
That's what you get for new technology, right? Boards are sometimes easier.
I know. Oh, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I can see them a little better.
Right, so these are some of the, uh, the distances that we looked at. And I know one of the comments from the staff report, in addition to the peer review, uh, reports that we've received, was the, uh, the planning department staff review, uh, report. One, one of the elements, uh, identified in that, that we need a little more detail and just add to the plans or specific dimensions to some of the property lines from both the buildings and the other site features. So those will be incorporated to the next set of site plans. Uh, we are waiting for the updated, uh, traffic peer review, for the updated materials before responding. We want to make it, uh, a single response that will make it easier for the board and the peer reviewers to review, uh, all at one time instead of trying to piecemeal something back in. Uh, so for reference, again, the building is more than a hundred feet from the property line along the easterly edge. Uh, building to building, we looked at the, uh, the distance from Building B to the existing home on Tommy Marks Way. Uh, and that's roughly two hundred seventy-seven feet, uh, then almost, uh, a thousand feet to the Massa Prague, uh, properties along that edge as well. Uh, ultimately, we, we did talk at the last, uh, community meeting for the town of Braintree with the residents, uh, from Waymouth. Uh, we're asking questions. It is approximately eighty-four feet from the edge of the fence to the property line, uh, when measured perpendicularly from the limits of our project, uh, basically up to the, uh, property line that abuts the Waymouth residence there. Uh, and then it's, uh, well over a thousand feet to the condominium owners, uh, to the southwest there. Uh, Mike, if we could zoom back out to the full slide? Thank you. Uh, so one of the elements that, uh, that we did proactively start planning and scheduling as we were waiting for the peer review comments to come in was additional soil evaluations, which we knew, uh, we needed to get some additional information on. Uh, so we did go out and perform twenty-two additional test pits in order to observe the underlying soil conditions to support the stormwater management design. Uh, so the results of that additional test pitting will be incorporated into the revised stormwater management system design. Uh, will be coordinated with the, uh, with the town as well as with the peer review consultant to ensure that the stormwater management system is designed effectively. Uh, and again, as previously noted, we talked about this at the last hearing, uh, but we did take, uh, another look at the, the height of the fencing, the landscape screening that, uh, abuts the areas closest to the Tommy Marks residence. Uh, we heard the comments loud and clear. So we are committing to raising the height of that fence and changing the materials. We did some sound analysis, uh, and some light trespass analysis to identify and help us design that a little bit more. Uh, so that is going to be a ten-foot fence along that edge and it's going to be a one-inch-thick wood fence, which provides better, uh, sound buffering, uh, than a PVC or a metal fence would be. Uh, so we are going to be proposing that along that edge that provides a better visual, uh, screen as well as a noise barrier. Uh, and that will be supplemented with additional landscaping, uh, working with the landscape architect as well as Garrett Tunnison, the wetlands consultant, uh, identifying some good species that are going to grow in fairly densely and provide better visual barrier, also viewed from the residential properties towards ours as well. Uh, so in conjunction with the higher fence, we believe that it will provide, uh, uh, above and beyond, uh, noise and visual buffering for the proposed activities on the site. Uh, in addition to that, some of the additional changes with, uh, the revisions and pulling back the paved areas that we talked about, uh, the last planning board hearing, we did eliminate the outdoor, uh, trailer storage areas. With that, we provided additional opportunities for wetland enhancements. Uh, as part of the filing with the Conservation Commission, we've identified, uh, areas outside of the limits of the, uh, the upland tree and planting uh, that would be performed in order to, uh, comply with the conservation regulations, uh, for the wetlands enhancement areas. Uh, in the area closest to the Building B loading area, which was eliminated, uh, we were able to provide a, a much more robust landscape enhancement area, uh, which is identified in the updated Conservation Commission filing. Uh, again, one of the comments from the staff report from the planning department was to highlight some of those areas that are shown on some of these exhibits on the actual site plans, uh, just to ensure that everything's coordinated, so that will be, uh, updated on the site plans as well. Uh, so in addition to, to some of those changes, we are going to be providing a comprehensive response to comments for all the peer review comment letters received to date, uh, that addresses all the, the stormwater of the site, the loading, circulation, all those elements. Uh, so that will be provided to the town within the next few weeks in preparation for the final hearing, uh, for what we hope would be, uh, the last hearing, uh, with the planning as well as the Conservation Commission boards, uh, ultimately pending any sort of additional comments that come out of that process. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Van Assen Associates to speak a little bit about the, uh, the updates to the traffic analysis performed.
Good evening. Andrew Ossnol with Van Assen Associates. I just want to give an update on the transportation impact assessment and the peer review process. Um, first off, as mentioned, we prepared the updated analysis showing the same CGMP uses on both sites, on both buildings, um, just to cover the flexibility within the, uh, within the study area. Uh, we've circulated that assessment to the town and its peer reviewers. Um, to cut to the chase, the site with the two CGMP uses does generate more traffic, about an additional one and a half more cars every minute during the peak hours, um, but does not change the overall findings of the study we presented earlier. Uh, just to simplify it, the corridor itself is operating under some constraints right now. Regardless of the project with or without it, it's going to continue to operate under some constraints. Um, but this project in and of itself isn't the root cause of those problems. Excuse me. I'll leave the specific mitigation measures to others to talk about, but, um, our recommendation was and still is to, um, provide funding to the town to, um, to pursue some of the improvements that have been designated in the finalized report now. Um, I'd agree that, you know, with more traffic from the project, it would probably be a more significant in, increase in the, um, in the investment, but I'll let others discuss the, uh, the mitigation measures. That's just our recommendation. Uh, the second item I want to update the board on is the peer review process. We have been in contact with the town staff and MDM and we are aiming to provide a formal response before the July hearing. Um, I will say that the preliminary comments on our February transportation impact assessment were relatively straightforward and they weren't, nothing in there would change the technical aspects of the report as presented therein. Um, I'll let the peer reviewer, if he so chooses, address that, speak for himself, um, on that. But again, I, that's all I really have to formally present to the board. I want to make sure I'm leaving time for your questions this evening as you've been patient in holding them this whole time. I'll turn back to Brian for any closing comments.
That's where we stand at this point, kind of a walkthrough from where we started to where we're at, um, here. Uh, Andrew, um, has, as a result of the peer review report, we asked us to study an additional intersection relative to some cut-through traffic. That was, that was completed today. So with, all of the, um, additional information will be contained in our response letters to the peer review reports. But we're happy to take any questions or comments from the board.
Sure. Um, so with regards to the peer review, the town of Braintree had, um, is doing a stormwater peer review, um, and also a traffic peer review. And then I understand that the town of Waymouth is also doing independent reviews. Do you anticipate that you will formally respond to all those reviews? Um, I'm just curious how we think, how like you'll work through the peer review, um, with the Waymouth peer review in collaboration with ours? Do you have like an anticipation of how that, will that all kind of come through at the same time?
Yeah, we have no plans to respond formally to the Waymouth peer review.
Okay.
Unless there's something in there that everybody missed that, that logically requires, uh, a response. But we haven't been, I, I've been told that they're done. They haven't pr, provided them to us or requested a response from us. So to date, we haven't seen them.
Okay, all right, um.
From Waymouth?
Yep, yep, yep. Um, I think we might have a copy of one of them, I'm not sure. But I was, I'm just going to jump over to the director just to update, um, from the planning department's end, um, if there's been anything you've been working through outside of like the peer review. They've been doing a lot of, um, they've been going to a lot of meetings between this meeting and the last one. So just kind of an update on your end.
Yeah, of course, Madam Chair, I'd love to. Um, so Carlos and I have been talking quite a bit, um, also myself and, um, attorney Palmucci, as well as, um, Mr. Ossnol. And we had, um, a meeting, we've kind of met twice since the last meeting. I, I am in so many meetings, but nonetheless, there's, there's quite a bit of progress that's being made here. Um, I've also issued my staff report, um, and because we have the peer, um, I kind of kept it to the non-drainage, um, and traffic comments. So none of my comments, I think, are, um, unaddressable. Um, I think Carlos had kind of touched on that a little bit in his presentation. Um, again, just going through the ordinance and the detail that I do and making sure that, um, all the, you know, boxes are checked and, and whatnot. So, um, my staff report has also been issued to date. Um, the, they're working on, Deb Keller had finished her first sort of round, issuing a, 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 a first memo as well as an updated one that brought in some wetland issues. We've shared them all with both boards, obviously. So they're working on a response to that as they're working through the plans. I want to make it clear that I've told them I don't want four revisions. You know, it just doesn't work for us. We have, uh, way too much of a workload. So as we chip away at the comments and there's additional comments, they're making those revisions, um, as they move along and then they will submit, um, a full, complete, revised set that addresses everybody's, uh, comments to date. On the traffic side, we had a meeting last week, um, with their team, myself and our peer review. Uh, Bob Nisho couldn't be here with us this evening. Um, he had done an initial review, um, and then we sort of talked last week about these additional trips. And he said that he took a very, uh, quick look at them. Um, he doesn't have any additional concerns. However, he hasn't had a full chance to, to complete that review and summarize that in writing. Um, so hopefully we'll be getting that, um, in short order. So now is sort of the time where we start. So now is sort of the time where we start to, um, get the final drawings, get all the questions and comments addressed and answered and then I, you know, work my, my magic and, and put it all together. Uh, we will be having discussions about what the traffic mitigation is going to look like. Um, and I am sort of, um, taking not a, a backseat, but allowing, um, our conservation planner and the Conservation Commission, given the jurisdiction here, um, to, to really get into the, the wetland side of things. They were out there today, questions about vernal pool and sort of locking down those locations. Some of the folks that are here this evening were probably there as well. Um, and it's, it's, it's starting to, to come together and the, the details are starting to, uh, be supplemented and more information is, is coming forward. So I look forward to, um, getting sort of the final, uh, plans and those final peer review reports. Um, I will say, um, to the applicant, like I've said to several applicants in the past, um, the sooner we have the drawings, the sooner we can, we can get those out to our peer review partners, um, and get those comments back, um, if there are additional comments or additional things that need to be clarified. So, uh, I anticipate, uh, the hearing, um, obviously there's going to be some questions from the board members, um, and maybe there's some new comments from the public. We've heard, um, several comments, all with sort of a, a similar theme. Um, uh, if the hearing continues this evening and then, um, we will start to get all those materials together, um, and make sure everything's in order and, and start to work towards, um, hopefully wrapping this up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I do want to take, this is, uh, still an open public hearing, so I do want to take the opportunity to invite anyone from the public who would like to make, um, further commentary on the project. I would ask, um, to try to draw attention to any new concerns that you have, um, or any, any updates you want to share. But, um, try, um, try to present any new information, um, but don't let that also, don't let that prohibit you from coming up. But, um, I also, before we get, um, into public comment and board comment this evening, I, I am in receipt of two letters, um, that I would like to read into the record this evening. Um, one is a follow-up to the community meeting held, um, by the District Six Town Councilor, Lawrence Mack, and he apologizes for not being able to make it to this evening's planning board meeting to share these words himself, but he did ask that I read them into the record and share them with you all this evening. So his note is, "To the members of the Braintree Planning Board, this project is located in my district and I would like to state my full support for it. I have met with the Banner Park representatives several times and they also joined me at a constituents' meeting to answer questions. They have been considerate about my concerns and are dedicating land to the town to ensure that an adequate buffer of land always stays between the development area and Braintree neighborhoods. Additionally, they even took my suggestion to create a dog park for the town. Lastly, I want to state that I believe this project will create an excellent source of revenue for the town going forward. Thank you for your time, Lawrence Mack in Braintree, Town Council, District Six." Um, and then I have one more note, um, from the Office of the Mayor of Braintree. Um, it is addressed, um, to myself as Chair regarding the Sixty Columbian Street Banner Park project. Dear Chairwoman Joyce and members of the Planning Board, I am writing today to express my support for the proposed development at Sixty Columbian Street, known as Banner Park. This project presents an opportunity to advance a longtime underutilized property into a campus-style development suited for biotechnology and industrial use and in turn provide a multitude of benefits to the neighborhood and our community as a whole. Bringing life science and biotech to Braintree has been a goal of my administration and most recently one that has come to fruition with the relocation of Integra Life Sciences, DBA TEI Biosciences to Wood Road. Banner Park will create further opportunity for this type of redevelopment in Braintree and will only serve to enhance the many unique benefits we have to offer here. Additionally, the renovation and expansion of the existing structure, along with the construction of a new building, will provide increased revenue to the town through one-time permit fees and reoccurring increased tax revenue while also creating new job opportunities for our residents. In addition to the commercial value brought forward by this project, the plans will also enhance the adjacent open space by preserving more than forty acres of land for walking trails and conservation area. This will allow residents and members of the neighboring New England Wildlife Center to continue to enjoy the property in conjunction with its redevelopment. I am excited about this project and look forward to working with the development team as they move forward in the permitting and construction process. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Charles C. Kokoris, Mayor." Um, if anybody from the public would like to ask questions or make comments, um, I'd welcome you to come up to the podium at this time and just as a reminder, if you can just come right up, come right up. Um, if you could just state your name and address for our, um, notekeeping records, um, and then please feel free to comment.
Sure. Um, I actually have some pictures I'd like to give you, is that possible?
You can bring them up, yep, I can share them and then we can, do you want them back or do you want us to put them in the record? You can, yep, we'll pass them around. Uh, no, we'll get one, we'll, we'll put that in the record for him.
Thank you. So this is my property, so I want you guys just to take a look at this picture if you don't mind. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Deanna Murphy, seventy-seven Tommy Marks Way in Waymouth. So I come to you not only as the closest butter to this project, but also as a Braintree businesswoman and a Braintree commercial property owner. I have operated my business in Braintree for over ten years. My business is an eco-friendly hair salon. We divert over ninety-five percent of our waste, compost, and give back to organizations that preserve nature. So you can see not only how this, this development is very close to my house, but also against my core values and the complete opposite of my daily mission as a small business owner trying to give back to my community. I understand this is a special permit they are applying for, correct?
Um, yes, special permits, I plan to review.
Okay. Has Braintree given out this before? A special permit for life science biotech?
Yes.
You have, okay. Were there any guidelines or restrictions that the town put on that special permit for those, the one before? If anyone's looking for any record, uh, decisions or anything like that, they can be supplied through a FOIA. I don't, I don't have files here with me with.
Yeah, it would be hard to. Okay. Speak about specific conditions without them in front of us.
Okay. Um, so would there be a chance, if you do go through with granting a special permit, that you could put restrictions on it?
I mean, we always have the ability to draft conditions as part of what we're doing, so yes, we could do that.
Okay. Um, are there any other manufacturing warehouses in Braintree? Do you know if they have restrictions? I guess what my question is, is like are there operation hour restrictions, buffer from residential restrictions? If possible, I'd like for you to be able to put restrictions on this special permit. Um, I know that you stated you can't ask who the tenant is, but if you could put the stipulations on, we are asking for a five-hundred-foot buffer from residential, hours of operation to be normal hours of operation, or eighteen-wheeler loading and unloading time restrictions. And I know they say it's not Amazon or a cannabis grow warehouse, but the last meeting, Flower Express, it was asked numerous questions about their business, details of their operation hours and more. So I, and I know it was presented for a five-hundred-foot buffer for residential for cannabis. Uh, my question is, why not for potential harmful chemicals? You know, we put a request out twice to the developer, once at the Waymouth Council meeting and again last week at the Braintree Town District meeting, and our proposal was regarding the lack of buffer, sound, noise, and privacy issues, and all those, um, did not get, uh, mitigated at all. So we asked for a five-hundred-foot buffer, that they remove or move the loading docks and a bigger privacy wall. I know they have proposed four more feet towards the privacy wall. I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how much wood would keep out the signs, sounds of loading docks, but I would think it wouldn't be a lot. The proposed, um, we asked again for a five-hundred-foot buffer and removing the docks and we were told there will be no five-hundred-foot buffer and we are moving forward with the loading docks. They keep saying that they are willing to work with us, but it does not seem like they are. I have invited them to come to my house to see how close this project is and they did not respond. The invitation is open to the board as well, if anybody would like to come and see how close this project is to my house. When we asked why so many loading docks or why they couldn't be downscaled, Alan McDonald said, "Chemicals cannot be mixed on the loading docks, that's why we need so many." So what chemicals? What is going, what is going, what is that going to do to our air quality if they can't even be put on the same loading dock? Again, if a five-hundred-foot buffer for cannabis to residential is needed, I would assume a minimum of a five-hundred-foot buffer for hazardous material should be in place for residents. The parking lot with eighteen-wheelers and loading docks is thirteen feet above grade from my house, looking into my backyard. I have a pool. As a woman, having people in eighteen-wheelers and loading docks looking into my backyard, let's be honest, that is very uncomfortable. My backyard is where I spend ninety-nine percent of my time when I am not working with my family. I don't believe a ten-foot fence is going to mitigate that. A new issue that just arrived the last time we spoke was a connection of the walking path from the Wildlife Center to this property. This is literally five feet from my fence, so our little buffer that we did have from them will now have a walking path in it. Our fence is at grade, as you can see in this photo, you cannot see my pool because the fence is at grade, so our pool is six to seven feet down. Again, this is a huge privacy and safety concern. Being a woman, again, in a bathing suit with my young child trying to enjoy our pool and having complete strangers five feet from our fence looking down into our yard is very concerning. Safety-wise, a person, child, or dog could easily fall into our yard. Again, our in-ground pool is right there. That is a huge safety concern. We also have a dog who is outside with us in our fenced-in yard. I can only imagine if another dog was walking along that path and saw my dog, they would easily be able to jump into our yard, again, causing another considerable safety concern. This could also even prompt for our homeowners insurance to go up. Along with the pool safety concerns and privacy concerns, there is a huge concern of people being able to now access our backyard so easily, which makes me feel unsafe and to the safety of myself and my family. A five-hundred-foot buffer and removing or relocating the loading docks would mitigate many of these issues. Some of my questions I'm going to ask now might be for conservation and if it is, just please let me know. Does Braintree have any buffers in place for certified vernal pools?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Does Braintree have any buffers in place for certified vernal pools? Um, in, in the State Wetlands Protection Act there is, I wouldn't be able to answer the local bylaw right now. Okay, that's okay, that probably is a conservation question. Um, and the twenty-five-foot buffer from wetlands, I know that's what the town of Braintree has. And in my opinion, it's twenty-twenty-two and we can do better than that. These are our wetlands, I think we can put bigger buffers in to be able to save the land. And has anybody notified the town of Holbrook because they are an environmental justice town? So newly updated regulations as of March twenty-twenty-one state that any project within a mile of Holbrook or that any project that could affect the air quality within five miles of Holbrook would be subject to a MEPA review. I know they said that they've started it, but this is something the town of Holbrook should know because they are an environmental justice town. This project falls underneath that from section eight, chapter eight, section fifty-six, "As an environmental burden which is described by any reduction of groundwater levels, impairment of water quality, increased flooding or stormwater flows, damage to inland waters and water bodies and wetlands, forests and open spaces from a private industrial, commercial, or governmental operations, or any other activity that contaminates or alters the quality of the environment." So that is directly from the Environmental Justice updated March twenty-twenty-one. Lastly, I'd like to read the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Article ninety-seven. "The people shall have the right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise, natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic qualities of their environment, and the protection of the people in their right to the conservation, development, and utilization of the agricultural, mineral, forest, water, air, and other natural resources is hereby declared to be a public purpose." So in closing, I ask that you respectfully deny the special permit and if you do approve it, I please ask that you put stipulations in for buffer and noise. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I know, um, we have requested that the clapping be, um, omitted just because it's very distracting to the board. Um, I think we take these comments very seriously and will certainly evaluate our ability, um, to, to put on some conditions that were discussed, so we certainly will look at that. Um, is there anybody else from the public who would like to come up? Yep, just come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you, sir.
Yes. My name's Michael P. Devlin. I've been a resident of Braintree for forty years. Twenty-nine years on Liberty Street. Over the forty years, I've seen an increase in traffic. And, uh, I went to the neighborhood meeting last week and I expressed my concern to these gentlemen about traffic. And I, what is your name?
Andy.
What is it, Andy? Andy. Did I get this correct? A- Annie's doing a study on the traffic. And did I hear what I, I heard? I know I'm getting old, but did you say, say there's going to be a si- significant increase in traffic because of this project?
It will not be a significant increase.
It will not? Okay. How many loading docks is going to be?
If you could, um, just, if you want to address your questions to me and then I can reach back out and to the applicant for his, for response, thank you.
I heard that there's going to be nineteen loading docks. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Um, would, yes, but would someone, like, from the applicant be able to just, um, who said, yes, nineteen? Okay, great, thank you, nineteen.
Okay. Now, wouldn't you think that would increase traffic? You see the traffic now on Li- Liberty Street going to Grove Street? Traffic someday goes up to St. Clair's. So we're going to have tractor-trailers on Grove Street. It will increase traffic, we're going to have more cars, right? I think it. With the addition of this project, it's going to be harmful to the citizens, our children. I'm totally against it. I know it's going to bring in revenue for the town, but over forty years, this traffic is just getting out of hand. And it's somewhere it needs to stop. And as a resident, I feel compelled to be here tonight and voice my concern about the traffic and tractor-trailer trucks going on Grove Street. What's in the best interest of the town? Money? Or citizen's safety? Or our children's safety? If you pass this, it's going to be money. And I hope you've taken a consideration to vote against this because it's not in the best interest of our town. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Yan May from eighty Tommy Marks Way. After all the meetings I have attended, I really thought there will be some solutions and answers as my family and I awaited patiently for each town hall meeting. Last week, from the District Six Braintree Residents' Public Hearing, I realized the project team have no intentions of working with us. Some of the requests we have asked are to scale back additional five-hundred feet from our backyard, remove one of the loading dock on Build 'Em B to at least give us more privacy and less disturbance to the nearby residents. All requests responded back as a firm no. We are not really asking a lot compared to this huge project that's taking so much away from us. I understand it is your land to build, however, we also have a piece of land that we own living right behind this project. It is not fair to even think that our voices are not being heard enough. I also wanted to bring up to your attention that on our Waymouth Resident Public Hearing, someone brought up the topic of protected species. We do have a lot of salamanders in the area and anyone have looked into this aspect yet? I see those every day near my property and in the neighborhood. Also, the revised proposal was just not enough. These eighteen-wheelers that run twenty-four-seven are just unacceptable for nearby residents living too, too close to these biotech facilities. I don't think any residential has to deal with this kind of noise right in their backyard. Families will have lack of sleep and kids need to go to school next day with sleepless nights. I am not convinced that the project team are willing to revise their planning and I hope that the Braintree Town can reconsider all these problems we're facing ahead of us. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Yep, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Raymi Yares, um, and I am Special Counsel for the. Um, and I am Special Counsel for the Town of Weymouth. My, um, office address is Forty Grove Street in Wellesley. Um, I just wanted to clarify, uh, about the peer reviews that are being conducted uh, on behalf of the Town of Weymouth. They were all done, they were signed off on, and then we learned that the project, um, had some revisions. So rather than submit out-of-date comments, we decided we'd pull them back and, um, our peer reviewers are already at work looking at the new revised plans and we hope to get new plans, um, and new comments to you soon. Uh, as a preview though, uh, I think it's fair to say that our traffic peer reviewers believe that the, uh, the traffic study area is too small and does not include enough intersections, uh, specifically in the Town of Weymouth. So there'll be some suggestions, um, that will need to be, uh, uh, considered on that score. Um, and with respect to stormwater, um, there was, uh, a, a principal, um, comment was that there needed to be test pits and soil tests done. Sounds like they've been done, uh, so they'll be reviewing those to see whether they in fact support the stormwater, um, analysis that has, uh, uh, I'm not sure whether I understand that it has or has not been submitted yet. But all of that will be, um, reviewed by the, uh, Weymouth, uh, peer review team and we hope to be able to get to, um, our comments in advance of your next meeting. So thank you very much. We appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Dave Morgan, Forty Tomi Marks Way in Weymouth. Um, I know we want to get out of here before midnight, but anyway, there's a few, uh, a few quick points. So I've gone to all the meetings. Um, there was a huge discrepancy of the parking study done by Weymouth. I'm not sure if anybody's here from that parking study about the number of cars. There was like thousands of differences far as the, um, the volume of the cars. Um, so that was one thing.
If I may, we don't have a parking study.
I mean, not parking, I mean, uh, um, traffic, I meant. Yeah, traffic. No, I'm sorry. Traffic study, um, done by the Town of Weymouth Consultants in the Braintree ones. I don't have the exact figures, but I know they're, they're miles apart as far as things. The other thing I haven't heard a whole lot of talk about is the effect on the water table, um, in the stormwater by, you know, sort of just common sense. By moving hundreds of mature trees and paving over and putting up a building, um, it's going to have a significant effect on, um, stormwater drainage. Uh, and then I know that they've talked about, like, they call it enhancement areas, um, which is they, they plant tiny trees to replace some of the big trees, which I'm not sure if that really helps with the drainage. Um, and then one of the other things that nobody's really talked about, I took this picture the other day and we can put it to record. Uh, anyway, this is baby deer in my backyard and so nobody's talked about it. There's a lot of wildlife that live there. And I know that's, you know, they have, they don't have a voice. So I mean, that's why I wanted to just put this into the record. And that, to me, I mean, it's brought up with the loading docks. So, you know, if you go to the Grove Street Stop and Shop, the loading docks or Stop and Shop are in back. I think there's three or four of them. And there's no, you know, residential area in back of that. But, but Stop and Shop's a pretty busy store and yet they only have three or four. So what's going in there if they need nineteen? I mean, that's significant, um, significant difference. And so that alone is, is concern. Um, and then my final point is that it's just too big. Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand square foot warehouse. It's humongous, humongous. I mean, that's, you know, uh, Stop and Shop's average about a hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. So it's twice the size of a super Stop and Shop. But anyways, I'll leave this with you and that's all my comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, um, my name's Jessica Flaherty. I live on West Street in Weymouth. Um, I live four houses down from Route Eighteen. So I am used to some traffic in front of my house. Um, but one-point-five cars per minute in peak times would literally be West Street, which is point-seven-five miles. It would probably be back all the way up the whole street, which is into Columbian Street. Um, so that doesn't seem like, um, feasible to me in terms of actually having the ability to leave my house when I want to and actually have my teenage daughter back out of my driveway safely. Where I live, my own children have almost been hit in a crosswalk when someone actually stops to let them cross the street and someone else rear-ended them. And, um, the first car almost hit my own children. It's not a safe street and to add that many more cars is absurd. Um, I also don't know if that includes all of the trucks that are going to be delivering stuff to them all the time. Um, any Amazon deliveries this company will need, any Ma- uh, WB Mason deliveries this company would need, food deliveries for the employees, and all the other traffic that will be coming in and out. Um, and where are the tractor trailer trucks going? Are they going to come down West Street where they really can't take a right in the right-hand turn lane? They would have to actually be in the middle or on the left lane to actually make that turn as a tractor trailer truck and stopping all flow of traffic on Route Eighteen, which is not a good idea because you know that's a hot mess already. Um, if you've seen that intersection, West Street and Route Eighteen, it already has failed in terms of the ability to have traffic flow normally. Um, in Weymouth, the number one employer is the hospital. And we can't stop the hospital from growing. We need the hospital. We need all those resources available, but we don't need this. It's not a need. It's a want from the developers. And it's just too much. If you live in an area that is increasing in traffic or you live in an area where you're used to having your backyard be kind of private and all of a sudden it's not, I just don't think that the developers are listening to the people who live there and understand that this could be your house too. Can we go build a big, huge building right outside your back door? Like, it's not okay. I also want to find out if they took into consideration the fact that the Goddard School isn't open yet and they're going to have a ton of traffic coming and going as parents drop off and pick up their kids. And the fact that CVS is probably going to be developed, um, making a new CVS from that Stop and Shop, so a bigger one, so there's going to be even more traffic in that area right down the street from this development. I don't know if you, you know what I'm talking about, right? That area and everything. So I just, I don't know if this study included all those things, the developments that have already happened, the places that are already going to go in and cause even more traffic. Um, it's just not feasible. I don't want anyone to take part of my land to make the road four lanes in front of my house and then making sure that I can't resell my house because of the fact that now it's not worth that much because it's on a really, really busy street. Um, and I don't want my kids getting hit in my own, in front of my house. I don't want anything to happen in front of my house. And it's already really, really hard. Like, I literally fold laundry in front of my front window and I watch the traffic just get longer and longer. And if there's one-point-five cars per minute, I'm sorry, there's no point five. It's one or two and it's probably two per minute. And that's going to be way too much and it's going to affect everyone, everyone. And I just don't know if everyone realizes that. You're not going to be able to get one mile down the road in ten minutes. It's gonna co- take twenty. It's gonna take twenty minutes. And the high school's right there too. Weymouth High School. So I don't know if you guys realize that as well. Everyone goes to Weymouth High either down Columbian, down West Street, and down Eighteen. Those are all connecting to the same traffic pattern that all the people who are working there would have to take. And it's just going to be too much. So like, should it take my own daughter half an hour to get to school in the morning? We live a mile from the high school. That's absurd. Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure that you know that I, I do not support this. For the residents who live close by and also for the fact that like, I'd like to be able to get out of my driveway. I, I would like to not get hit on the crosswalk in front of my house. And I would like to not see that many cars idling in front of my house, which is again, not really good for the environment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Robert Cullinan. I live Twelve Valley Road in Weymouth, Mass. I've been listening to all the comments. Um, my presence here is actually five-fold. I'm the original developer. I obtained the permit to assemble the land, put Tricon Park together. I also did the same thing for Devon Woods. And back in nineteen-eighty through nineteen-ninety-five, I owned and operated Tricon Park. The, uh, one pages of my comment would, if you mind, I'd like to hand them to you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, that's going to the record. Could I request a copy as well?
Um, yes, there's.
Just one second.
Thank you.
Over the past probably ten years, I donated about seven acres of land to the Conservation Commissions, both in Braintree and Weymouth. They have bought this entire park. I donated the land and retained the right to approve any work that gets done on my conservation previous land. I do not own any part of Banner Park. However, I am going to mention a half a dozen items which are very straightforward. I will jump, uh, down to item number five. The MIPA permit that currently exists, and I've heard an awful lot of comments about traffic, awful lot of comments about, uh, uh, what is and isn't. The proponent just stated that he's now starting to talk to MIPA. MIPA has a higher, uh, and a much more thorough review that I had to pay for back in the eighties that will take care of all the requirements of their parking because they're upgrading and they're segmentizing part of the project. They have to go back to MIPA. They have to get all of their traffic studies updated. The traffic studies and the MIPA report's about nine-hundred pages. It was put together with geotechnical people. There were three traffic studies and it goes from Con Street to Route Eighteen, West Street, over to Ivory Street. It's in the report. It is part of the permit. The entire, uh, ninety-two acres, which is what the MIPA report covers, okay, had a complete, as-built, build-out, which was a requirement of MIPA. There's a plan attached to that that will show you that. If the proponent, okay, were to not just start, as he said, talking to MIPA, but go to MIPA and get a copy of the report that it would outline completely because the report was required by the Planning Board in Braintree as well as the Planning Board in Weymouth. It was a little unusual, okay? I built the first building and this particular board, back in the nineteen-eighties, decided they wanted a full MIPA permit. I am also required and was required to build a traffic, okay, intersection at Grove and Columbian, uh, Street. I paid for it, designed it, had to get the permit. There's a complete conservation permit with all the necessary details on the entire ninety-two acres. It's a matter of public record that the registry of deeds and it's in the Braintree Town Planning. The amount of work needed before an intelligent, responsible answer can be given has to be after a complete new MIPA review and a complete new update of a traffic study that was required on the original park. The kind of, uh, let's say layout that was proposed, there's a layout that requires fire safety. That fire safety, you can't turn a, a fire truck around. You can't turn a fire truck up and down any one of the driveways. That health safety will be an issue when you build these two buildings. And the last thing I will say is that in segmentation, even though the permits for Mass General may have been approved, the trip ends, which will probably, and there are eight-hundred car parking requirements, will probably require somewhere in the neighborhood, okay, of fifteen to twenty trip ends on at least half the cars because it's a medical facility. They have one hour, people in and out. That's one of the reasons they'll have such a large parking lot. It's very simple and straightforward when a proper, uh, uh, traffic analysis, parking analysis is done. Can't be done on a glib. I'll take a look at it after the permit has been issued and if there's any mitigation needed. Before I was allowed to build a second building by this board and it took me almost two and a half years to get the MIPA permit. I had to turn around and study the traffic three different times. The full report is in the MIPA specification, so it's not a figment of my imagination. The absolute analysis, along with the wetlands, along with the flower fauna critters, along with the traffic and the full build-out is in the MIPA report. Traffic has changed. The requirement has changed. When that building was first occupied and for the first eight years of its life, it was all medical. Beckton and Dickinson was a tenant. There was Braintree Labs and it was Shimatsu, all related to the medical field. They all fit and they work perfectly. I'm going to say something that sounds contradictory. As a former developer, contractor, they're entitled to build on their land responsibly, but you can't squeeze a three-pound bag into a two-pound area. Uh, no, no. That in terms of what's being asked for is way in above. And the fact that the, the fact that the, uh, hospital came in and they're going to turn around and piecemeal it, the MIPA report covers the entire ninety-two acres. There's a plan in there that will show you it. There's a layout, okay? And there is an additional thirty acres or forty acres that Banner plans to use in their park. Whether they give away some of it or they don't give away some of it, there needs to be a comprehensive, updated traffic study and a comprehensive review of what the entire park build-out is planned to be. You can't take Building A because it's the hospital and Building B and C because it's going to be a medical facility. You can put medical facility almost any commercial building. I've built five to six million square feet in my life. I don't care whether you call it a warehouse or whether you call Beckton and Dickinson was in the lottery building, before it was the lottery building. They had two floors of blood processing equipment. It's just the exact same building as the lottery. Now, in terms of, uh, comments, uh, that when they get through with their MIPA report and if you look at those, uh, items that I've put down there, that I'd be very curious to see how they address the MIPA report, how they address the entire technical part of it. And believe me when I tell you, I was not happy having to pay the kind of money I had to pay to do that report three times. But I did do it because it was responsible development. As far as, uh, uh, setbacks, that the MIPA report does say that the buildings could be within a hundred feet of the property line. But, uh, there were a couple of issues. I talked with, uh, Melissa the other day that, uh, there is a highway business district line and a conservation land line. It's not a major problem, but it does need to be cut, uh, corrected on the town zoning map. That strip that I donated to both Weymouth and Braintree is all in a cluster zone. Um, I'm not here for anybody else but myself. I was overlooked, okay, in the notification by both Braintree and Weymouth. Weymouth called first. And when I found out about it, I got a copy of the plans. I gave, um, Melissa a package, I believe, about three weeks ago. And I would have met with Melissa before this meeting except they had a couple of family medical issues. Uh, I don't look it, but I'll be eighty years old next year. I am healthy. My brain works fine. And I can remember distinctly what was required of me from the Town of Braintree for almost fourteen years. That in terms of, uh, responsible development, Devon Woods works in terms of responsible development, taking and respecting the traffic, respecting. There are sensitive wetlands issues in the area. That's in the MIPA report. All of that is a matter of record. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Very appreciative of the thoughtful commentary, um, the history of the projects, um, and your time that you've certainly spent on these comments. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Siobhan Hahey and I'm, uh, Twelve West Street, a neighbor of Jessica who spoke earlier. And I just wanted to echo her comments and this gentleman over here from Braintree and the gentleman right before me about the traffic concerns. from Braintree and the gentleman right before me about the traffic concerns with this project. Um, not only as a Weymouth resident, but I also have a brother that lives in Braintree, and just the concerns about where the traffic is going to be going. There's already an increase in traffic on West Street that I see, especially since I've been working from home day to day. It's just increasing more and more every day, and even accidents that we're seeing more and more. And I am concerned about the traffic going in and out of the Stetson Building where the dialysis center is, and also the medical facility behind our house. There's a school in that area. There's school buses that go up and down the street during the school year. There's a school in the Grove Street area, um, where my nieces and nephew go to, and I'm, I'm just concerned that where is all this traffic going, and if, if it's gonna be backed up, um, with the new Goddard School in there, and I know Jessica also mentioned the CVS, I just really want them to take into consideration the traffic flow and the traffic pattern. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very, very much.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tom McMar. I'm a resident of, uh, Weymouth. Uh, I live on Western Ave, uh, which is just off of West Street. Um, I wanna thank you, uh, the board for allowing those of us from Weymouth here to talk tonight and, and voice our concerns. However, I do have several concerns, mostly with the traffic with the proposed project. Uh, the number one, um, is the number of trips coming in and out of Banner Park. And also whether, why aren't we considering the entire facilities, every facility that's in that Banner Park? I, not just the two new buildings that we're talking about, but also the proposed renovation of the lottery building there, which is going to add substantial, uh, number of trips per day, uh, that you heard earlier where the discrepancy was between the eight hundred and the thirty-five hundred is the number I have.
Excuse me for one second, sir, if I may, um, Madam Chair, because this has come up quite a few times, CVS, Goddard. All of the projects that, uh, when someone does a traffic report, uh, number one, there's a background growth built in, and number two, any project that was recently permitted that hasn't come online yet, the traffic consultant takes that report and they add those trips in. So the trips associated with Brigham are factored into this report. The trips associated with CVS factored in, and Goddard, uh, is, is also, well, they're operational now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but those volumes would be accounted for in typically a conservative, uh, excuse me, it's, uh, background growth, typically they do a half percent. They've been overconservative and they've done one percent. So if, if someone's concerned about traffic that isn't come online yet from a permitted project, that is included in the study.
Okay. Well, in the meeting of the twenty-third of May, uh, the, the tone of the meeting came across as it was eight hundred trips a day, and then it gradually came out that when you added Mass General Brigham, we're talking about thirty-five hundred trips a day, which is substantial impact to the area. I, uh, Western Ave, uh, empties into, um, uh, West Street, which you've heard about before, so I won't recover the traffic that predecessors speakers have mentioned. However, there is too much traffic on that road right now. I've lived at this location for twenty-two, over twenty-two years, and in the last nine months, uh, I had to stop running on a regular routine on West Street because it is, it is too dangerous. Uh, the shoulders are small and variable, and tractor trailers are driving within two to three feet of people running, uh, for their exercise in that road. And sidewalks are not in good shape and disrepair, unable to allow people to, uh, walkers even think about running, and they're only on one side of West Street. They also talked about the Stetson Building that's down there as well. And just within thirty to fifty yards of Route eighteen is Front Street, which dumps into the dialysis center and the Stetson Building, where Mass General Brigham also has another facility, which creates more havoc and traffic and backup down West Street. Uh, between the hours of about six-thirty to eight o'clock in the morning, it is very difficult for me to get out of Inman Road onto West Street. And likewise, at nighttime, the same thing. As we talk about the backup, uh, on West Street going to the other end down at Grove Street, before you get there, there is Summer Street, which is a main throughfare down at Weymouth Landing. I would expect that a number of these people in this facility would be using Summer Street as well to access, uh, Weymouth Landing coming from this Banner Park. I'm not interested in seeing another traffic light on, on West Street, to be very honest with you. And when you come down to, uh, then Grove Street, and you look at the, uh, aforementioned already, the Goddard School as well as the CVS, uh, I did my own study a couple of weeks ago, and it took me, traffic was backed up three days at three PM in the afternoon, uh, over a quarter of a mile, three traffic lights it took me, three cycles of the traffic light it took me to get through the intersection of Liberty and Grove Street. In addition to that, I'm sure if you talk to your constituents in Braintree, you'll find out the traffic on Birch Street is now increasing significantly and will with the addition of CVS, as people use that as cut-through fare over to Liberty Street in order to avoid, in order to avoid the lights that are there. So I ask you to consider that. Um, coming down to, um, yeah, we already mentioned the, uh, the, uh, Grove and, I'm sorry, the Goddard School and the CVS. But, uh, the impact of Summer Street and West Street has a lot of us, uh, very concerned. Uh, and then I know that the developer's done a nice job saying that, hey, we'll add bicycle, uh, racks, et cetera, at the facilities. Uh, but just listening to what you've heard about West Street and Grove Street, and the ability to people to barely walk or run on those streets makes it only difficult, more difficult for people to think about even commuting to these facilities, okay, using bicycles. So, you know, while I think it's commendable, it's not realistic, uh, given the expectation. And then my final concern is Grove, uh, and Commercial Street is a major throughfare for emergency vehicles that are used coming from, uh, Braintree, Weymouth, going to Social Hospital. What is the implications going to be for those emergency vehicles when we start adding thirty-five hundred trips a day, uh, to those, to that intersection, uh, where this Banner Park is gonna be, uh, located? So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your thoughtful, uh, uh, feedback on what our concerns are in this area. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening. Um, Gary McDougall, District Five Town Council, Weymouth, one thirty-one Southern Ave. I'm actually off West Street. Um, a couple things. You know, I heard the letter from the mayor and my counterpart at District Five, Mr. Mackin, Councilor Mackin, and I heard that they're very excited about this project, and if you look at the site map, it's very clear why they're very excited about this project. It's not a Braintree project. It's a Weymouth project that Braintree gets to vote on. If you look at the site map, there isn't a Braintree resident within a thousand feet of the project. If you look in this room, it's mostly Weymouth people. And there's a reason for that, because this is tucked into a corner into my district that's going to affect every resident on Tommy Marks and the traffic that you just heard about, which is off my street, West Street, which is gonna get absolutely obliterated by the trucks and the things that are gonna go on with this project. So I understand why the mayor of Braintree and, uh, Councilor Mackin are excited about tax revenue for a project like this. I, you know, if I was in that, as a town counselor, and I was in my chambers, and half the room was filled with Braintree people concerned because there was a Weymouth project that was going to affect Braintree residents, I'd have some empathy for that. And I'd hope to think that this board would too. And I appreciate you listening to me tonight, but I'd really like you to think about the fact that someday, some of these residents are gonna wake up, and there's gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse staring right where that window is, a little past that window, into their backyard, that wasn't there before. And it's tough for me to understand how this is such a great project for Braintree, and, and at the same time, kind of have, you know, sympathy for the fact that the tax revenue is a good, a good, a good thing for the town. Tax revenue shouldn't be a number one priority for a town. It should be the residence quality of life, and that includes the town next door too as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Patty Cummings, and I live on Tommy Marks Way also. And admittedly, um, I'm not familiar with this, these types of procedures. This is probably my first and for often in, um, attending these types of meetings. Um, and I think it's really worth everybody's time. One thing that I kind of, um, struck me when I first started listening to the meeting, and I couldn't see who made the comment, because I was, um, I had somebody in front of me, but it's, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, I heard somebody say something about wrapping this up, and I was like, mm, I don't think it's time for that yet. And especially after I heard this gentleman's information, I'm more, I'm so curious as to, um, that these intelligent people have all their facts straight, and now I hear some more stuff and more stuff. But I'm just hoping that, um, however these things go, that you'll allow, uh, oops, a little bit of ex, um, a little bit of extra time or more time in making your decisions. Because I was trying to think of the point I was trying to make, but if you look at my neighbors, um, I have, I'll have to ask my husband, but at least thirty-five years there. My next-door neighbor has thirty-five years. Their neighbors have thirty-five. So it's in the hundreds of years. And, um, it's just been such a wonderful experience, living where we live, and we're very passionate about keeping that going. Um, one of the people that spoke earlier is our next generation in, in the neighborhood, and, um, we're very hopeful that that quality of life can be passed on, because I have to tell you, there was nothing I could even compare it to. So we're being very, um, philosophical about that. That's my approach. I just hope you give it as much time as you can, and appreciate all of the intelligent, um, information that we've received, but I think there's more to be learned here and considered. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming up. Hello?
Uh, my name is Carol Harvey. I also live on Tommy Marks Way number seventy. I am so not a public speaker, but I feel it important enough to get up here. And first of all, thank you for being here at these meetings. I clearly do not understand why we keep hearing this one and that one cannot be in attendance. They take these jobs in these offices and run through these offices. Where are they? The mayor hasn't been here once. I don't understand. I don't understand. So thank you all for your interest and your understanding and how we're feeling. Um, I grew up in Braintree on Liberty Street. Um, my dad was instrumental in putting the yellow line down there on forty-five, fifty years ago, the traffic. I worked in Braintree Schools for twenty-five years. I just retired five years ago. I am a graduate of Braintree Schools, bought on Tommy Marks Way to raise my kids. They want nothing to do with our beautiful home that we've been into for thirty-five years because of traffic, congestion, craziness. It's shameful, shameful. You, now, the dog park that is now being proposed to go into this project, wasn't that going to Palmetto? What happened with that? Never heard another word about it. We're talking traffic. Where are these people gonna park? Where are these animals gonna walk? Where's the security in this? Where are the deer? Coyotes, mice, fishercats? Where are they gonna live? Is there gonna be room in there for them? This is just, it's crazy. I, I, I have commuted from Tommy Marks Way to Braintree Schools to Rockland Trust my entire last twenty-five years. I have to allot at least, and now the twenty minutes, to get there. Um, I drive that road, I, I walk a derby, I go to Stop and Shop and back again. Just tonight coming here, four bike riders on that corner, taking their life in their hands. If that were my kids, I would lose my mind. Um, stopping at Ellis School of Gymnastics, having a merge into that left. Who, how are they gonna get in and out of there? My daughter just bought at Turk, um, Turtle Crossing. She was here last week. About five Braintree residents. How is their publicized to the Braintree people? Did they know about it? How does, how does it get out to them? Because they're not affected. Like Mr. McDougall just said, how many houses are along that pathway from Liberty, um, Grove, um, even on the other corner, there's a house for sale, there's a zone commercial. What's gonna go in there? CVS, my friends on Thetford, I got the heck out. It's, you, I don't, I hope you understand what you're doing to where we live. And I'm sixty-two now. My kids don't want any part of our house. It's sad, very sad. And our neighborhood, like we said, we've been there, all, all of us, I've raised our kids there, we've all lived there, we're all still there, and how would you feel to have this going on in your backyard? It's, it's very, very upsetting. Like, I've lost, like, sleep over it, and I'm a sleeper like you have no idea. So, um, in the hospital, it's building and building and building and building and building. I, I pick and choose. I'm lucky to be retired. I pick and choose when I wanna go anywhere, you know? So, just wanted to add that to the already expressed comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I think you did a good job public speaking tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carol Murphy. I live at seventy-seven Tommy Marks Way. The Banner Park project goes beyond the scope of a standard project and thus has applied for a special permit. This means that they must meet certain criteria in order to obtain that permit. I researched the criteria that Banner Park must meet in order to obtain the permit. There are eight criteria set by the Braintree Planning Board. I lost. Banner Park does not meet six out of the eight criteria. Criteria two makes reference to the capacity of public roads to support the added traffic safely. Their own traffic report as well as the Piro review from Weymouth indicate that the roads are already overcapacitized. Criteria three, the proposed use shall not create any danger or pollution to public or private water facilities. The SPGA shall consider the adequacy of the methods of drainage at the proposed site and public water and sewer systems servicing the site. No excessive demand shall be imposed on the water system. This proposal has water draining towards the brook running behind Tommy Marks Way. This is a natural water resource that ultimately runs into the Mill River and Whitman's Pond. Their parking loading dock for tractor trailers has potential for runoff of pollutants into this natural water resource. The homes on Tommy Marks Way already have issues with wet basements from the brook. The added runoff will create further harm. Criteria four, the project shall, shall conform to the signage, lighting, and environmental standards set forth in this chapter. In particular, the SPGA shall review the project with regards to off-site impacts from glare, noise, vibrations, smoke, heat, and odor. This project is eighty-four feet from residential homes. It is thirteen feet higher than the abutting residential properties. The warehouse is thirty-seven feet for a total of fifty feet high. There will be noise, vibrations, and emissions from tractor trailers. There will be glare from commercial lighting into bedroom windows. Criteria six, the site plan shall provide for screening and buffering. There is talk of, and just tonight, we were told, a six-foot fence. Before that, it was, uh, a ten-foot fence. Before that, there was only a six-foot fence. This project is fifty feet high. What noise and privacy is this fencing going to buffer? Criteria seven, the site plan shall provide yards and other open space as required by law. We have recently learned that Banner Park is entering into an agreement with New England Wildlife Center to put walking trails in the already inadequate eighty-four-foot buffer zones, further diminishing the privacy of residential abudders. Criteria eight, the SPGA shall review the economic effect on the general compatibility and harmony with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. Week after week, neighbors and abudders have come to object to this project. Aside from eliminating one small parking area and relocating some generators, the developer has done nothing to address our concerns. In fact, we have been told outright that they will not move the loading dock on the south side of the building, will not increase the buffer zone, and screening is only being investigated. For the immediate abudders, this project will have a tremendous impact upon the value of our property. The Banner Park project does not meet six out of the eight criteria, and thus should not be granted this special permit. I thank you for your time and consideration. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I pray to God that somebody will finally hear us.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Bob Cummings, and I am located at fifty Tommy Marks Way, South Weymouth. My wife and I moved into that house in January of nineteen eighty-seven. So a little over thirty-five years now, so certainly very well aware of the area. And uh my wife and I had owned a home prior to that, as some of the folks have already got up and spoken, right on West Street. The traffic on West Street, back when I owned that home, which I believe was in nineteen seventy-nine, was extensive then. It was just far too much then, and now it's bad, and without question, this is gonna have an impact, which is gonna make things worse than it already is. My wife and I brought up two sons on Tommy Marks Way and clearly, they're not in school these days. Um, but there was a bus stop at the end of Tommy Marks Way, went to Forest Street, to this day, that bus stop is there. There are young people on the street clearly that have young children that are standing at that bus stop. On Forest Street, there's a number of bus stops on both sides of the road. And the, the traffic without question is gonna be increased by some amount of some number. And as one of the other gentlemen present- uh already made mention of, the numbers that we're hearing are from like zero to a thousand. Or actually, at one point, they said thirty-five hundred additional travels back and forth. It's, it's difficult to listen to people with all due respect, that the, the traffic studies, it's acknowledged that the tenants aren't even known. So how much value can we put in the traffic report? Obviously, the tenant is gonna have a massive effect on the, the results of that report. I just think this is, this is just inappropriate. You're backing up against a very nice residential area. It's nice and quiet there. We paid some serious money for these homes and still are through taxes and whatnot. And granted, the tax money is not going into Braintree. But certainly, as you know, at this point, we're so closely loaded, uh located to Braintree, we're all supporting a lot of these stores in Braintree. And why wouldn't we? They're just up around the corner from us. Stop and Shop, Double G Subs, Dunkin' Donuts, Papaginos. So we are contributing to the town of Braintree. I can't imagine what this project should have happened, what this is gonna do to the market value of these sixteen homes. Having been there as long as I have, I certainly expected that whenever the time came for me to sell, that even with the market being what it is, that I was gonna maybe, you know, make a couple of dollars. I think every one of us would hope to do that when we decide to move on, to move down in size or whatever it might be. And would, would that, would that just not gonna happen with, should this project happen? It's a nice, quiet residential area. As you've seen from all the number of people that have got up from our street, there's sixteen houses. And pretty much everyone has been getting up to speak at one meeting or the next. It's a very nice neighborhood, amazingly so, out of those sixteen houses, nine of us, nine out of sixteen are the original owners. This is like, you know, the old time Walton's family. People all get along. We have cookouts for the whole street. So it, I, I understand, you know, this tax money coming into Braintree should this be approved. But I'm hoping that you look at it from a little bit more of a, a human side. We're, you know, we're abutters to you folks. We do again, support the town to a point. And um I appreciate your time, but this is, this is really a very, very important and a huge decision. And it's also difficult to listen to these various meetings with people saying, well, we're not gonna, you know, extend the project. There's very, very little land left, and, and certainly the same in Weymouth as it is in Braintree. It is difficult for me to believe, and not that it's gonna be next week, but maybe in five years' time, you know, this, this issue's gonna come up again. And what's it gonna be then? It's gonna add more traffic, more noise if from just during the building part of it, if nothing else. So I really hope that you'll take it, take into account the human value of what you, you really have in front of you here. It's, it's a great neighborhood, and we really hope that it'll remain that way. I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Walsh, and I'm from two-eleven Allerton Commons Lane in Braintree. That's Devon Wood. And I commend all these people coming up to talk about the impact of the traffic. That's my big concern as well. And as a Braintree resident, I support all of these people from Weymouth who are very concerned. But Braintree too will be affected, and all of us who use these roads are also gonna be affected. And I just wanted to add my voice to that list. Thank you.
I appreciate your comment.
Good evening. Jeremiah Murphy, seventy-seven Tommy Marks Way. I am a Weymouth resident, but I'd like to point out that I was born in Braintree. Um, at the last planning board meeting, Member Conley urged the developer to work with the abutters. "The people you need to talk to are right here in this room," is what she said. Since then, the developer has not reached out or attempted to talk with any of us. My wife has even gone as far as inviting them to come to our home, but nothing has happened. We've gone to all relevant meetings expressing our concerns. In return, we get nothing, just minor changes in the illusion of accommodations. We attended the Weymouth Community Meeting May twenty-third and the more recent Braintree District Six meeting, June ninth, with the developer. Between those two meetings and a parking lot conversation with Brian Palmucci, my wife has made our request loud and clear. Remove or relocate the loading docks closest to Tommy Marks Way, increase the buffer zone, and provide an adequate sound barrier, something better than a fence. Palmucci's response to my wife was, "You're not getting your buffer zone, and we're moving forward with the loading docks." Alan McDonald followed that statement with, "I'm sorry you feel like we're not hearing you," meanwhile refusing to budge. At the Braintree District Six Community Meeting last week, Mr. Palmucci seemed aggravated with our presence. He spoke to me in an unprofessional manner, asked me to top, stop talking as I assisted my mother with her comment. "Why is this relevant?" Well, I believe it's relevant because I'm afraid the situation is now being viewed by the developer as, excuse my language, but a pissing contest. As they just refu- refuse to budge. We're now three planning board meetings into the process, and we're being offered a fence only as a concession. This is inadequate. I feel like we're not asking for a lot, but our requests are neglected to be met, not even halfway. As you can see, the people from Tommy Marks Way are not going away, and until some real mitigations are made, I'm afraid we will have no progress. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm a Braintree resident. My name's Lynn Gavin from Perry Road. I live on the other side of town, but I go over to that area constantly. It takes a long time to get there. There's a lot of traffic there already. Again, it's traffic, traffic, traffic. But one of the things about the master plan in Braintree, what is it about? Traffic going down Washington Street, building the six floors, right? Same thing. People who go on that side of town travel to the hospital. And I, I said this at the last meeting, does anyone go from Braintree to Route eighteen to get to Social Hospital? Can you raise your hand, anyone? No. How about when Officer Kit died, right? The emergency in Braintree that day? Could you even travel Colombian Street? No, not at all. And it's gonna affect our fire department? It's gonna affect our police department? Who, who's gonna patrol up there at nighttime? Kids are gonna be up there drinking in the woods. Goes on everywhere. It's gonna affect our resources? The, the, the number of cars, when you say one point two cars a minute? Think about that in front of your house. A minute, one point two cars. I'm sure everyone. It needs to be scaled down. The tractor trailers going in the daytime. As I said, I live on the other side of Braintree. I'm probably two miles from the highway. I can hear the tractor trailers from the highway. Elm Street, the new development that went in, what, what is the problem with the residents there? The rumble from the tractor trailers. You can't have nineteen loading docks going in by a residential area, whether it's Braintree or Weymouth. And earlier tonight, I came in a little bit late, but it was about Weymouth Landing with the parking. I went down to go to dinner there on Monday night, couldn't get a space. So where do we go? We went into Quincy. Couldn't get a space there. Why? Cause everything is overdeveloped in this area and giving up all this conservation land, all this. I grew up, as I say, right up the street on Liberty Street. It's shameful that the people from Burt Street aren't here, from Sycamore, from Forest Street, cause this is only the beginning, people. And that's my concern. So I hope you're hearing me, cause all these people are from Weymouth. But shameful that all the people from Braintree are not here tonight about this. And we have a lot of business in the town of Braintree already. Some of it's really going downhill. Social Plaza is a perfect example. They can't even control it. So when a project goes in up there, how's that gonna be controlled? We're gonna have the traffic from the new place on Ivory Street? That's probably gonna get approved too. So we all live in this town, and I would hope that someone might think about the quality of life in this town, cause I've been here for fifty-five years. So let's hope you guys think about all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, yep, come on up. If it's all right after your comment, I'm gonna open it up to my board and then, yeah, thank you.
I'll be really quick. Um.
No, you can tap time just.
Jim LeBaron, twenty-nine Massapehog in Weymouth. Um, I, I have, I mentioned before, before you folks, um, I work in the life science industries. I work out in Framingham, very large complex. No, 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 um residents, you know, a, a, at all, not near, not near the, our plant. We have actually fourteen buildings out there. Um, the, the facility that was spoken about earlier, the Wood Road and the old Haymanetics Building that's been converted, I don't, there, there are no residents over there that I know of. Um, there's a, a building used to be a canvas over in Canton, um, another life sciences facility. These buildings are usually not this close to, to residents. Um, it's, I know Tricon, it used, you know, that was the original plan. Um, it's a different world than it was twenty years ago, twenty-five, thirty years ago. We, we, we see, I think we've evolved and uh tried to not only protect the environment, but protect residents from such encroachments. And it is their, it is their land, but is it the right thing to grant, or is it the right thing to do and to grant? Um, if you can, that doesn't mean you should, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Very apprec- very appreciative of the commentary um this evening. Um, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the board for comments or questions on the updated information presented and just give a chance to ask any follow-up questions to the applicant or uh our planning department. Member McComby, we'll start with you. Do you have any um questions or comments to ask at this point?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm gonna wait for the peer review, uh, for some comments. But I, I'll just ask Mr. Palmucci a question, uh, since he has a, a unique perspective. Being a uh city councillor in Quincy, and of course now representing this developer and hearing from the former developer, uh, listening to neighbors, whether they're in Braintree or Weymouth, um, you know, a- as a councillor, you know, how do you respond to these people? What, what, what do you say? What would you say if this was happening in your district? You know, what, what would you tell these people?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I wear many hats. Um, I, so first and foremost, I think the importance of speaking the truth uh in any capacity, whether it's me before you, or me as a city councillor standing before a community meeting about a development that someone's trying to permit, or me standing before residents who are concerned about a development in which I'm representing. And so I, I try to speak the truth, what's, what's possible and what's not possible. And so I've been very upfront at all these meetings that a five-hundred-foot buffer will not work. It will not happen. We can work with you in ways and to try and uh mitigate the negative impacts. Uh, I suggested, I've made several suggestions. Uh, obviously, the team has, I made different suggestions, but the team has come up with some ideas, and we're not, not going to build this, right? We, we would like to build this, permitting uh obviously pending your approval, but.
If we could just um be respectful, I think he's just speaking hypothetically, but if we could just be respectful. I, I think, you know, we try to be respectful of all, um, all speakers. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, answer. All I can do is do my best to work with people and try and find some common ground. Sometimes it's easier with some groups than it is with others.
Okay. So what I would say, just to paraphrase, you know, what Member Conley said last time, is I hope that um, what I'm, what I'm hearing is maybe we haven't uh found enough compromises or other solutions, and maybe it's just worth continuing down that road. Um, I understand, you know, we, we are empathetic to all these comments. On the other, on the other hand, this is a large piece of property which has been waiting to be developed and has been developed. Um, so I guess that's what I would say, you know, is maybe we need to continue our community discussions. And, and, and technical ones, obviously, of course. That's, that's what we're more, um, you know, involved with. And um, you know, we're not gonna solve the traffic problem. Um, but um, anyway, a- and I would also say we're probably, I was gonna ask you this, but I'll just say it. I, I get the feeling you're not gonna reduce the size of this project. I mean, your, your point being honest is you just, they just don't wanna do it.
That, that's our, that's our intention, yes. Given the, given the ten- the um, the type of tenant that we're looking for, these are the, these are the size of the building.
Right. And so your market studies would show that there would be demand for this size uh facility with the types of loading docks, et cetera, that you're building in.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen tomorrow, but.
Right, right. Um, and so the, the two hard no's that, that I've been upfront about were the eliminating all loading docks on the south side and a five-hundred-foot buffer. Um, the five-hundred-foot buffer is a result of, or the location of the building is a result of the wetlands and trying not to have a wetlands crossing, uh, while still accommodating potential tenant uh use needs. And then the loading dock is the same, I, as we explained at the last couple of meetings, uh, community meetings, uh, that size of a building is likely to attract two tenants. And so they wouldn't share the same loading dock. One would be on one half of the building, the other would be on the other half of the building. So it may be that that south loading dock is never used because one tenant leases the entire building. We don't know that, but in terms of marketing ability and trying to attract tenants, we need to have some flexibility. Um, we, I do have empathy, as uh Councillor McDougall had requested, I certainly do. This sounds like a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood that has raised many children, people grow up, they, they move back there. It sounds excellent. I can't imagine the property value is gonna go down with the, you know, the marketing that uh these folks have done for their own neighborhood over the past several months. And I can empathize with that. I, it's not lost on us, which is why we're willing to, within some parameters, do what we can to try and mitigate the negative impact. If I lived on Tommy Marks Way, I would not like this project either. I wouldn't. I'm in a different position where, where I stand now. Um, I think it's a, overall, a good project. We meet the Braintree zoning code, and that's why we're moving forward. We meet the Braintree zoning code and that's why we're moving forward. But I, I a hundred percent empathize with the folks. I don't, it's not a, it's not a pissing contest. It's not a, okay, we're just marching down the road towards, uh, what we hope will be approval. It's not. We're legitimately trying to work with folks and we'll entertain any reasonable idea to try and mitigate some of this stuff, as, as we have been doing. We've been moving forward with that and we'll continue to do that. I appreciate the comments.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, Member Crowe, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, but I'm not necessarily looking for an answer tonight, but I do want just the thought as we go through the peer review. And I do want to say also, as Member McComey just said, we, we are hearing people's concerns. We do understand them. This is an ongoing process. There is no draft conditions, no final plans. It's something that's getting worked out as we go along. And we've had some feedback from experts and there's additional questions and additional feedback is coming in. So we'll see. It is a work in progress. Um, this, the, the proposal does appear to meet all the zoning for building the buildings. The uses they're requesting require a special permit and they're requesting that. So my first question that I'd like to look at is you're, you're marketing this and you're expecting this to be somewhat of a bioflux, life science, but the use categories allow for a much broader scope of use. So my question is if you can think about proposed conditions that could be specific to, not necessarily a particular tenant, but the type of use that you're going for that would prevent some of the other... I know at the earlier meeting you said this won't be a distribution center. You know, I'm looking for things like that that could deal with traffic or hours or types of uses, something that would work for what you're thinking for the project, but also quell some of the fears of not knowing exactly who the tenant is at this point. Um, appreciate the feedback with the additional fence and plantings. My questions with respect to that are whether those things will be at the elevation of the buildings. I know there's an elevation difference. Um, and whether from a site perspective, it makes sense to bump the fence out further from the property at the same elevation. And the last thing on the height is, is there, there are privacy concerns for the people living on Tommy Marks and the pool that's back there. And so I'd be curious to know how the height of a person standing on a loading dock or sitting in one of those trucks, how that plays into the fence? For example, if somebody's standing on the, on the loading dock or is a ten-foot fence going to block their visibility from the backyard, notwithstanding the trees? And if not, what can we do about a higher fence? So those are a couple of things that I would want to look at and the, the next round of comments that come in.
If I may, just quickly, um, Madam Chair, to Member Crowe's point, um, thinking a lot about the comments and, and some of the comments that the board members have made, I've asked them to give us a cross-section so we can get a better idea of sort of where everything falls. And a six-foot fence is great in the right location. A ten-foot fence is great in the right location. And sort of how does all of this play in when we look from Tommy Marks and we take a slice across, we slice into that dock and we slice into, into the next building? So I think that will be helpful to try to get an idea of what needs to come up, what needs to go down and the best way to sort of situate some of these plantings and, and barriers and whatnot.
Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
Madam Chairman, uh, I can see why you wouldn't want to move the loading docks just for aesthetic reasons, but I've heard, I didn't hear anything, any valid reason for not moving it to the other side. It'd be advantageous to you because it'd provide additional buffer to the residents, not only noise but light.
So that there's, uh, on that particular building, there's loading docks on both sides. And the thought behind that is that, um, if two tenants were to subdivide the building, they would each need loading docks.
And you can't cut down the number of docks? And so it's just populated on one side?
Well, if we were to put loading docks only on one side, that would limit us to only one potential, um, tenant of the building, which would be very, very difficult, I think.
Why would that limit you to one?
Because then one, the tenant on the south side would have to travel all the way through the land on the, the, um, the space of the other tenant?
I'm going to have to look at the plans. I don't see that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Grove. Member Connelly, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Um, I wanted to continue with Member Grove's point about the sighting of the building. Um, the residents have really discussed the, uh, loading docks as a concern and the orientation of the building, particularly to Tommy Marks. Um, could you discuss maybe what it is that you've considered in that in greater detail? I understand that you're saying that there are, you know, two possible tenants and that the position of the docks, um, you know, is to accommodate that, but could it be configured any differently?
Sure. I, I could maybe take, uh, take this one. So, uh, prior to actually submitting any formal plans for the application in front of the boards that we're here today talking about, uh, there was a pretty intensive conceptual planning process where we took a look at the overall site as a whole. Does a number of smaller buildings make sense? Does one really large building make sense? There was a number of different factors that went into ultimately ending up where we did today. I think a lot of that was a function of the market analysis of a, you know, typical-sized building that would work well for one, maybe two tenants for this size space. And that, you know, a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty thousand square foot footprint for each individual building is in that range of what tenants, uh, would expect for this type of development that tenants, that, that the owners ultimately going to be pursuing. Uh, and as far as the orientation of the buildings, we did look at the overall, uh, orientation of the parcel. If you look at it, overall, it is oriented in the north-south direction. Uh, so having the buildings, uh, be located in the east-westerly direction was problematic, mainly due to the topography and the wetlands. Uh, there is a natural elevation change on the sites that factored into where we locate the buildings and how you orient them. And a big part of that also was the, the wetlands and respecting the, the natural wetland buffers. And as, as Brian mentioned earlier, not wanting to actually encroach on the wetlands and have any, uh, impacts as it relates to that. So really was, is a number of different factors. Is that market study, working with, uh, realtors and brokers and understanding what the demand was, what the size building was. And also to the point earlier about the loading docks and how those are configured, uh, working with ultimate flexibility for one, maybe two tenants for the buildings, as well as also for the process flow of how materials are handled, as I think was mentioned earlier, where you don't want to have all the loading docks in one area where the receiving and the shipping would be happening all immediately next to each other. There's some separation of those functions that you also need to consider. So working with the architect on how the logistics and, and the process flow would work within the buildings also dictated some of how the, the loading docks and the entries and the passenger parking relative to the loading dock was configured. So there's a number of different factors that, that went into citing the buildings as they are.
Thank you. Um... The other, um, comment that I wanted to, to bring up was the capacity of public roads. Um, within construction, we have the ability to put some controls in direct traffic, but after that, um, the, the trip coming, you know, will go freely from there. And I, I, I want to say that the traffic comments from the residents of Weymouth and the residents of Braintree have been heard. Um, and that's something that we need to address within our work. And, um, in terms of mitigation, I, I think that the community meetings were an important first step, but the mitigation, um, particularly to our neighbors in Weymouth does need to be addressed. Um, there's not mu- as much required in Braintree and I think that their concerns need to be heard and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Connelly. I think to follow up on some of the, um, buffering concerns heard this evening, um, some of the comments made by some other planning board members, I do have just some overall, uh, site layout comments and just asking if alternatives were considered. Um, one comment is just with relation, um, just in relation to the sighting of Building B. Um, was, is there any ability to shift, um, Building B north? Uh, slide it north, maybe seventy-five feet or so and try to reconfigure the parking loading docks on the north side to add a buffer on the south side to Tommy Marks Way? Um, do you have any flexibility in something like that? Or was that looked at?
Uh, sure. I, I could actually flip to the aerial plan, which might represent it a little bit easier for discussion purposes. So, uh, as you can see, the lot actually narrows up. Where Building B is located, if we were to shift it further to the north, we end up having challenges with access to the loading docks as well as for the passenger parking that's along the westerly side of the building. So really it's, it's taking advantage of the, the geography, the topography and, and the wetlands limitations that we have, uh, not only at the southerly end where Building B is, but at the northerly end as well. There's a wetland that starts coming into the property there a little bit as well. So we can't push it too much further without encroaching further on that wetland. So we're really trying to, to find the middle ground between the various environmental resources as well as providing, you know, buffering that exceeds the zoning regulations along the, uh, the Weymouth Town Line, uh, as well as also fire circulation. That was an aspect that I, I want to touch on. Uh, it came up in our initial pre-meetings with the town that we wanted to have, you know, thorough and comprehensive fire access around the buildings. So we actually shifted the buildings a little bit further away from the Weymouth property line to accommodate, uh, fire access fully around the buildings, uh, which is going to be stabilized with the vegetated, uh, material, basically that has, you know, a paver that provides a structural integrity. So fire trucks can get all the way around the buildings. I know that was a, a comment that was raised earlier. So wanted to touch on that. Uh, so there's, there was a number of elements that went into citing the buildings where they are today. Uh, we could certainly take another look at it, but I, I think we've spent a fair amount of time ending up with the plan that we have in front of you today. Uh, and there's not a lot of flexibility to be able to, you know, shift the buildings completely at this point.
Yes. So kind of just a follow-up to that. So you have the access drive on the north side separate from the parking area against the building. If you were to shift and somehow combine that parking area and access drive and reconfigure that north... That north east corner? I'm just wondering if you could buy any amount of ability to pull that building north?
Uh, we could certainly take another look at it. Uh, we did spend a, a good amount of time ending up where we are today. Uh, so we're, we're happy to take another look at it. Uh, I can't make any promises necessarily, but, you know, that's, that's what we could offer at this point.
Okay. I, I'm appreciative of that. And then along those theme lines at the south side, um, there's the loading docks and then there's like, um, a strip of pavement that extends to the east of the loading docks, behind the loading docks. And I was just wondering what, what is that strip of pavement? It looks to be about... The best way to describe it without walking up there? Um, it's like the twenty-four feet wide pavement, um, along the east side at the back of the loading docks?
Yeah. So, so that area is essentially an extension of the, the fire access, right? So the, the green area that you see, uh, immediately to the east of the building, uh, those are those reinforced soil, uh, areas that I talked about in terms of being able to provide better fire access around the buildings. Uh, and the extension of that, as you go southward, that kind of rectangular strip of pavement that you see there, uh, part of that is for circulation for the, the trucks. So as you use the loading dock spaces, we looked at the largest possible vehicle that would ever be on site, uh, making sure that they could safely maneuver, uh, into the loading docks as well as turn and egress. Uh, we're also in the process of taking a look at confirming the fire circulation throughout the site. We got the turning templates from the town fire department. Uh, the turning is less intensive than would be required for the trucks that we modeled. So we will be preparing, you know, additional exhibits that shows that fire circulation can be provided. Uh, and it also provides an opportunity for the snow storage. Uh, that was something that came up in the staff report as well as the peer view comments, just to confirm that we are providing adequate storage for snow, uh, management within the site. So some of that area is also used to be able to store that without impacting parking and overall maneuvering throughout the site.
All right. Did you evaluate any ability to take any of the loading docks and shift them to the west? Like reconfigure them and pull them away from the edge of the building?
That was part of the evaluation and it went into the, uh, design and the coordination with the architect and the overall process flow of how the work went. If you pull them too much into the central portion of the building, it impacts the functional space of the rest of the building inside and you end up with these kind of larger pockets of dead unusable space within the building. Uh, so that was a function of, you know, coordinating closely with the architect on how the interior of the building would operate.
I mean, I'm sure it's, it is inconvenient, but I think the concerns are pretty significant from the residential properties. So maybe it's worth revisiting just architecturally why it is or is not feasible to shift the loading docks to at least, um, get a little more buffer for the residents that are, you know, going to be impo- impacted by this floating area? Um, was there any, um, consideration for a landscape berm, um, on that edge? Um, which would basically then maybe be able to have a fence on top of it just to try to raise up some sound protection with, with more of a berm-style landscape feature along that edge? Um, was anything like that considered?
Yeah, we, we did look at that and part of the reason of why we end up with the, the design that we have in front of you today with the, the fence that we had increased, uh, in height and we did actually eliminate some of the paving at the southerly end of that dock, uh, was we want to minimize the overall impact in any sort of tree clearing or land disturbance, uh, creating a berm ultimately. If, if you take the space you need to be able to grade up, create a flat area and then grade back down, it eats up quite a bit more space and would result in more impacts and more tree clearing than the installation of a, a fence would. Uh, and just to, to point out that, that the fence we have, you know, it's more than just a fence you would buy at Home Depot or Lowe's. You know, one-inch-thick, uh, cedar or pine fencing according to noise guidance and, uh, that are highway guidance, uh, does provide significantly more noise buffering and screaming than a traditional half-inch-thick, uh, wood fence would. Uh, so there's, there's good, uh, evidence and calculations that would support that this provides a significant amount of noise buffering as well as the ten-foot height would provide additional visual buffering, not only for the headlights and the operations, but also for the, the line of sight that you would see from anybody operating within the site, uh, either on the ground or within any sort of equipment being used.
All right. Um, would you anticipate, and you probably can't answer this, but would you anticipate equal use of the loading docks? Or would you be able to, um, I don't know, give preference to a tenant that might have, you know, more loading dock traffic to ha- to act, use the north side space or anything like that?
I, I, I wish I could answer that, but I, I think to Brian's point earlier, you know, we, we don't know. If it's one tenant, maybe there's a way to push them to the northerly loading docks. We, we don't know at this point. I think there's a certain amount of flexibility that needs to be ben- built in with the tenants. Uh, we have the loading docks as presented. You know, the assumption would be that they would be used.
All right. Um, and then just with regards to truck sounds and stuff, I mean, I assume we can add signage for no engine idling and that sort of thing in the building manager and can kind of maintain so that you don't have kind of like ongoing trucks sitting back there, noise, like when they're parked in the loading dock, the vehicles can be off and that sort of thing? Is that, do you think that would be something, um, that could be part of the operations of the, the facility?
Yeah, I certainly think there's elements of that in terms of no idling and guidance and best management practices for operations of the vehicles that could be incorporated into the, the overall site.
All right. Um, there was mention this evening of, um, a potential dog park, pathways. Um, I think we might have had past commentary on where users who would be accessing that feature would park. Is there kind of, have you guys designated that sort of work? Or will there be like a plan coming or outlined to like clearly understand where some of that is proposed?
Sure. So, um, as it relates to the, um, to the public use of trails, we're in the process of working on trail mapping with New England Wildlife Center. It's ongoing. Um, so the intention is that there'll be a trailhead with public parking available. Um, where that will be, I, we hope to have figured out soon. I think we're pretty close. Um, and as it relates to a dog park, And as it relates to a dog park, that is something that we're certainly willing to do, we'd like to do. But in terms of location, scope and scale, we would request that it be put in as a condition that we have to come back for a permit for specific approval on the designs for that. And that's just given, we don't know if Brigham is actually going to build there or not. And until that's kind of determined, which I think would be relatively soon, we don't know where the best place to kind of, kind of put that in size and scope is. So, we're committed to doing it. We just would want to have to come back for a permit for that, so we make sure that it goes in the most suitable place. But hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have a location for the public trailhead and parking. That's certainly the intent.
Thank you. I don't have any further comments for the applicant or the department. So, we have a lot of moving pieces still. And, you know, at some point, we will, you know, hopefully have a plan that is either, you know, is before us for some sort of approval. So, I think, you know, that's what we're working towards, is trying to, you know, figure out what these modifications are that move us in that direction and then ultimately, what is, what are we voting on and what is the vote? So, still, still work, still working through that. Is there anybody else this evening who feels like some comment that they just really need to say tonight has to be heard and then haven't had the chance to say it yet?
Do I have to say my name and address again?
Sure, why not?
Okay, Deanna Murphy, 77, Tommy Mark's Way. So, I do have a question on where the walking path would, I have two things, actually. If, I'll start with the loading docks. If the loading docks could be moved to the front of the building, they would still be able to split the building and give a tenant the loading docks. But instead of having them up here, they could be down here. So, that's a comment and a thought. I know there's wetlands there, so they maybe might not have to have 150,000 square foot building and maybe a little bit smaller of a building to accommodate moving those loading docks even further away. I appreciate all your concerns and questions about that. It truly means a lot to us. Also, looking at it where it says 277 feet, I want to just comment that that is from the edge of our property, of edge of our house, to the edge of the building. So, that really doesn't show the fact that it's only like 80 feet from our fence line to where the parking lot starts. So, I just wanted to point that out. And in between where it says 277, that small buffer zone that we do have right now would be turned into marrying the New England Wildlife Center pathways with over to where it says 965, which is where the other, so they're trying to connect that. The only connection is our backyard. So, again, that very, very, very small buffer zone that we have, which would be great if it was larger, is now going to be even worse because there's going to be complete strangers parking and walking their dogs and walking their family and just exploring the woods in that small buffer zone that we have. So, again, I just wanted to bring that up.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, so, we would, oh, yes, Member Connolly.
Or a comment regarding the walking trails and the dog park in combination. Pond Meadow has become a difficult place to take a walk because of some of the dogs locally and having both of those in this space may create additional burdens on the residents in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can come up and make a comment if you would like, sure.
There currently exists about 275 acres adjacent to the park that is part of Devon Woods. There are walking trails that already exist and have for almost 200 years and that when you take an overlay of the walking park, it goes all the way up to Cranberry Pond and that there will be walking paths that go up adjacent to the property and I believe it's the southerly side, that you'll be able to, can't walk through the wetlands and that it was a former Edison Rightaway, part of the land I bought, that there is a driveway that goes all the way up through there, which you can be able to get to. So, that the walking parks already exist, not only on the banner property, but they physically exist in the 275 acres. I believe there's five sections, when I went through the permitting for Devon Woods, that there are, actually, you could take an aerial and see almost naturally what's there. I think part of it's outlined in Cranberry Pond, but Cranberry Pond is only about 100 acres. This will be, end up being somewhere near about 300 acres and it exists. Just do a little analysis, okay, with some aerials.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so, all right. I don't want to cut you off, but we do have more, we do have more public hearings this evening.
Again, Patty Cummings, I live in Tommy Mark's Way. One question that I have, and I have been coming to all the meetings, but I'm still learning, but is there a reason why this project can't be done in some sort of phases? So, that you've all, we've all admitted, we can't predict the future. We don't know what's going to happen, we don't know everything. And I'm just comparing the building to what sort of happened over the last several years where we've put up all these office buildings. Well, guess what, we don't need offices anymore. So, now we have all these buildings. So, we never know, we don't know what's going to happen. So, this is a, this is a very ambitious project. I'm just starting to understand the scope of it. I'm just wondering, with all respect, if it could be done in stages. Do we have to build 18 or 19 loading docks initially? I'm sure there's a reason so that you can attract certain tenants, but you don't know. So, could we maybe consider doing this project in stages? That's all I have.
Sure, thank you. Yes, you may. You might want to grab your microphone.
Just looking at the two houses, I would say at the end of Tommy Mark's Way, and again, I am, I am not a surveyor and you have far more expertise than me, but I would probably guess that the fences on both of those properties are beyond the rear property line.
Based on these plans and based on- And I think one of the comments we have been making that I've noticed in the staff report is that we are still awaiting an existing conditions plan for this. So, I'm assuming that's forthcoming, but I think we need to get that into the record.
Yeah, absolutely. The plans were all prepared by licensed professional surveyors. So, we'll make sure that you get a signed, stamped set of plans.
The ones that are in the application?
Correct, yeah. They were used as the background for all the design files. We'll just make sure that you have the signed and stamped ones by the professional land surveyor as part of the revised package, as requested in the staff report by the planning department.
Okay, we'll review when it comes in. Thank you. All right, so, we would be looking to continue this matter to our next meeting, assuming that's feasible for the planning department and the applicant, excuse me, and that is on July 12th at 7:15. Is that, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so, we need a motion to continue this to the July 17th meeting at 7:15. Is there a motion by Member Grove? Do we have a second? Second by Member McConney. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Sorry, it's the 12th. It's the Tuesday, second Tuesday of the month. Oh, yes.
That's the time.
7:15 is the time. All right, thank you. If we could just, the board wants to take just a quick break, stretch break. Come back in five minutes.
No, we gotta stay awake, guys.
Huh?
We gotta stay awake.
And we brought one tea?
We need one tea and I got new water after that.
Kim, you, you, you see this project being sued and whatever, do you see illegal?
I don't know.
Saying?
There's a time here.
Is what?
There's, there's a security here. We have to be a lot of, so it's still like they're applying to somebody.
Yeah. Do you think Wayne, does Wayne have any standing to sue?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
I mean, they did, they did have that special counsel guy, but I don't know what that is.
He's just like a counselor.
He's just like a counselor?
I know, you ready? All right. I know, I know, I know, everyone's back, sorry. I don't know if we're back on. Are we out, were we, were we live the whole time? Yeah, just for town, just as soon. Oh. What'd he say? What did he say? What did he say, Darrell?
Huh?
Did he say we're all set?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you for that quick break, um. Excuse me, we're gonna get back underway and, uh, introduce the next project. Um, the next item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for four twenty-nine to four forty-five Quincy Avenue, a major modification to site plan review decision, file number fifteen dot zero seven. Um, and if we could just have the applicant introduce the project, uh, or just maybe go over what has transpired between the last meeting and this meeting.
Sure. Uh, Madam Chair, Frank Marinelli, uh, pleased to appear on behalf of the Quark car, car companies. And so what we've done is, uh, the, the original application was approximately twenty-seven thousand square foot dealership, and that has been reduced by about a thousand square feet. Uh, the, the last time we were here, we were talking around twenty-seven to twenty-three thousand, but the manufacturer wanted to have the service area covered. So the, the revised building is about, uh, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven square feet.
Twenty-seven two eight.
Tw- I'm sorry, tw- no, twenty-six.
Twenty.
Twenty-six.
No, it's twenty-seven now. Um, that's my number. Twenty-seven two eight-eight.
Okay.
Is that right?
No, the revised plan was twenty, twenty-six oh two seven, Jim. So anyway, um.
The new one?
All right.
It's okay, it's ten thirty.
So, 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 maybe I should've come without the engineer tonight. Anyway, when we first, when we first proposed it was twenty-seven two eight-eight, I think, was the application. Are you saying now it's twenty-seven two eight-eight?
Yes, yes, I think so.
We better get the numbers right.
Yeah, the first one we came in was twenty-three, then it was twenty-six.
No, 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 it was twenty, we filed the application with twenty-seven plus. We went to twenty-three, it was twenty-six when the service drive, the service got, you gave me the, the twenty-three thousand square foot app,
Okay.
uh, exhibits of the last time.
Yeah, I understand.
So anyway, uh, the revised plan is, I have, I have the zoning, the zoning table from the revised plan that was filed, and it shows twenty-six oh two seven. Twenty-six oh two seven.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back on track. Thank you. So, so the revised plan that was filed was twenty-six thousand oh two seven from a twenty-seven two eight-eight. So we're down about a thousand square feet. And the difference between what we tried to show the last time at twenty-three and odd square foot, what was that the service drive got covered so that it's, it's a convenience for customer drive up on, on ser- on service. Um, the orientation of the building is, as was shown the last time. Uh, all of the dimensional and density requirements are complied with. Uh, in fact, open space is about fifty percent more than is the twenty-five percent that is required. We have over forty percent open space. Uh, we have, uh, in terms of building coverage, it's only fifteen point two percent. Where you, you, you're allowed up to twenty-five percent. Uh, lot coverage can be seventy-five percent where, where fifty-nine percent. So, all of the calculations are by right, no variances. We have, um, a parking requirement for, uh, sixty-six spaces, but we have a hundred and sixty-nine parking spaces. So, we cover everything on the dimensional and density requirements and on parking. And, uh, it's a use by right in the highway business zone. The last time we were here, uh, there was a concern about the Westerly curb cut. We made that one way, so there's not going to be any lights coming out that are gonna shine on the residents that is non-conforming use in the highway business zone. And, uh, the landscaping, uh, the landscaping plan shows over a hundred and twenty, uh, plantings. We have about twenty-four trees, forty-eight shrubs and, uh, seventy-four perennials, and, and that's on the planting legend that was submitted with landscape plan. So, we've re- and we've reviewed the conditions. Uh, there is an issue of the water main in Patton Ave. The water main is about a hundred years old, but, uh, we're going to examine with the DPW. Uh, there was a request that, um, we look at that. Uh, we, it's not, it's not incumbent upon the property owner to pay for a replacement of the water main. So what we're gonna do is, uh, Jim Burke, our engineer who's here with me, is going to look at, uh, other sources of water to, to provide water to the proposal, maybe connecting from Columbia, and, um, and, and discuss all of that with the DPW. So that's where we are, and we've read, we've re- reviewed the draft conditions, and we, we believe that the use by right and the proposal is appropriate for approval. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Uh, yeah, Director Santucci-Rossi, go ahead.
While this is fresh in my head, so, um, about the water line. So I'm just thinking about when we did G. Was that tied in kind of over near Diggatano? It comes, doesn't it come through an easement from Quincy Ave?
We brought, um, uh, Jim Burke, uh, DeSau Burke, Sal. Uh, we brought an eight-inch line off the twelve across the street, um, and brought that up, uh, to feed Jeep, and there's a hydrant, uh, on Columbia Terrace. Uh, when the eight-inch is supposedly, this is what I wanna check with the water department, have an opportunity to see if we can feed it from up there. But there's an eight-inch on, in Columbia Terrace, um, like, and it's maybe two hundred feet, uh, from, uh, the other, uh, from the lot we're talking about. So, it might be just a better way to feed it than, uh, uh, from a, you know, construction standpoint.
Right, 'cause right now there's no water service on the lot, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, all right, so we kind, we framed a condition around that that you, you know, were...
I'd just like the opportunity to work with the water department to figure out a, uh...
Yeah, to find the best, um...
And if we can't, then we'll do what we have to do.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't seem like anyone else, um, that might be, the residential home might be tied to Patton Ave, but I can't, I mean, who else is...
There's not many people left on that six-inch. I know they've been trying to get rid of it and abandoned it. Um, Hill Ave has tapped off that six.
Okay.
But the, it doesn't go that far. Uh, it's only maybe, you know, three hundred feet off of Quincy Ave.
Okay.
Um, so you can't really feed it that way either. I think that we do have a brand-new eight-inch, uh, for the Jeep on, you know, in a, a good location for us to tap, so I'm just gonna talk to the water department about going that route.
Okay.
Sorry. That's all right. Um, did you wanna add anything, I guess, with regard to the staff report?
Um, no, at the last meeting I had drafted the conditions, um, you know, this is, this is pre-owned, you know, um, revamped. We had previously done the pre-owned that was, uh, just on the opposite side of, of, of Patton Avenue. They've scrapped that, so we have this, um, newer, bigger building. Um, and then prior to the previous meeting, you know, Frank had reached out that Hyundai had some manufacturer things that they wanted Quark to change. So, all those plans are in now. Um, we did get some minor comments from the engineering department, um, that Jim Burke addressed. Uh, those materials were sent over yesterday. That's all the stuff that's attached to the back of the draft conditions. So I did go through the draft conditions, um, this afternoon. I do have to change the square footage, um, of the building. Um, the other important thing to note, um, you know, as everybody is so concerned about traffic, um, is that Jeep is producing about forty-one percent less than was projected. So, um...
Is that a, is that a measurement made recently, or when is that?
Yeah, that was done in May.
In the main report, the, yeah, we, we did pro- provide that the last time. I'm sorry, I, I should've gone over that again, but I, I mean, you've had a long night.
Oh, that's okay, I, I mean...
But it's one, it's one new vehicle every two to three minutes. So it's...
Yeah, I, I just, like, driving past that site, like, pre-COVID, there were so many vehicles, so many buyers up there, and now there's just, like, nothing. So I feel like looking at those numbers now is just not, is almost irrelevant, but I get it, I get it.
Yeah, it, you know, and it, it's, it's, I guess, you know, to a, to a separate, you know, we all, we have other monitoring, and we have monitoring from, um, pre-COVID, and everything comes back, like, ten to fifteen percent lower than the projections.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So, I guess that's good, 'cause we're being conservative in our analysis, but we're never truly, I mean, if you think about the project over the course of a couple of years, and everything's only really putting about half into the network, we're really never getting to that, that projection that we've, that we've, you know, conditioned. So, um, it's good, it's a good thing to have less than the projections. Um, and I wonder if IPE is just, you know, conservative, and that's the numbers that are projected. You know, they've even taken the new, um, dealership and used those same IPE numbers. So, I mean, I would, I would be shocked if we even with Hyundai got to what Jeep was gonna be by itself.
Yeah. All right.
So, um, just thought that was important to add.
Yeah, they had found, um, in the, uh, VAI report that, uh, the traffic volumes were approximately forty-one percent less than projected in two thousand and fifteen, when, when the Jeep dealership was approved.
All right, great. Um, and just a reminder, this is a public hearing still, so if there is anybody from the public who wishes to ask any questions or comment, um, yes, please come forward.
So we, uh, Lucia Quahley and Philip Smith, and we live at eleven Patton Avenue. And to start with, I would like to pass out, I'm not gonna, um, repeat them, um, the comments that we made, the comments that we made at the May tenth meeting, for, for, just as a reminder what we talked about.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, basically, um, we are the non-conforming use residents, that the attorney likes to refer to us as. Um, we understand that we can't stop this or fight this and all of that. Um, and our, as you can see, uh, the, our concerns that we mentioned previously. And I did take a quick look at this map, and our biggest concern, our number-one concern in the mitigation that we would like would be to move the Westerly driveway. Um, it does, uh, look directly at our home and our property. So if I could, if you would allow me, I would like to propose what I think is a very realistic and even a better idea than their engineer may have, uh, come up with. And I'll just would take a quick peek at this map.
If you're gonna speak, ma'am, you need to stay at the podium.
Oh, you can take the microphone with you, um, be careful with the cord.
Um, yeah, if you could show me that map you showed me before. Um, this is our property right here, if you can see it. And I would recommend that, this is the current entrance into the dealership that's up here. I would recommend that the entrance would still come in here and go along this, there's a white fence there, just have the driveway go that way and directly into the dealership here. That way the drive, you're avoiding people coming up and down Patton Ave this way and going in this way. So, again, I think it's better for the dealership to just go straight up and then take a left turn straight into here. And that would be, and then, there would be an avoidance of a driveway exactly opposite our home. So that's, um, what we would, um, like to mitigate, that one change, if we could.
So one item that the applicant just noted is they changed that driveway that you're pointing out to a one-way, which would mean vehicles would only go in, they wouldn't come out? I don't know if that adjusts your concern.
That does not help us. I know that you talked about the amount of traffic. There is a, you know, and the percentages and all that. It's a very, very, very narrow street. Right now, we have to put orange cones on that side of the street because we cannot back out of our driveway, pull in or back out of our driveway now. So, I don't understand how having that entrance right in front of our property, we have two driveways, so coming in and out of those driveways would be extremely difficult with people, um, going in, coming up Patton Avenue, going in that. If they just moved it to go along that white fence, and they could still go in the entrance they go in now and take a left turn, it would go directly into that new dealership, and it would avoid us trying to back in and out of our driveways.
Yeah, the only thing I could...
And the additional traffic that it will be created, going in or out, it doesn't matter, it's still additional.
Yeah, Patton Ave, Patton Ave is a, is a public way, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, if the applicant did consider or could consider some sort of configuration, it wouldn't necessarily preclude anyone from using Patton Ave?
We understand that.
So, um...
But it would make it easier for our, us to go in and out of our driveways without having to worry about an exit right there in front of our home.
Yeah.
Now, it's an en...
The entrance, yeah, the entrance.
So I, I just, I'd like to...
And it is a very steep hill as well.
So, the comments about the one-way and that, and whatnot, and that location came, came from me due to the steepness and whatnot. Now, they have a circulation patent, so that, that you can get into the service department and sort of keeps those people to that side, which is, I have to say, we've proved quite a bit of car dealerships here in town, and having that distinct separation between getting people into the service is, it's pretty, it's, I don't wanna say it's in- important, but it's a, it's a crucial part of, of, of the business operation. Um, this is kind of introducing vehicles right into the front door, um, of the, um...
Well, that's currently what, what they have now, with the big dealership on the back. So, entrance goes straight up into their front door now, on the big one.
Does that existing parking lot have two access points or just one on Patton Ave? Like...
Um, one.
Well, it's, it's, it's going to be two. It's right on the corner of Patton Ave and Columbus Te- Co-
Just one now. That's what I was just clarifying, how many were there now.
Just one.
But I have the plan in front of me, so...
Well, I think that we've kind of made our request, um, clear, and I would implore you to have some empathy and sympathy for our situation, even though we are considered the non-conforming use residents. It is a home that's been there for seventy years, it's well-cared-for, it's well-loved, and despite the fact that we live in a parking lot, basically, we have them on three sides currently, we enjoy our home. So if you could, at least take a drive up in that area and see how narrow the road is, see the hill, and see where they wanna put that entrance would greatly impact our quality of life and the valuation of our, our home. Yeah, I would appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for coming and for commenting. I don't know if the applicant wants to address any potential ability or inability to, uh, revise that.
It, it really is kind of a, a circulation issue. Um, having a curb cut so close, uh, to the front door, it's, um, uh, it, it's not, um, uh, in a, a good situation for bringing people onto the property. The way we, the way this, uh, system works is the, the existing curb cut at the, close to the intersection of, uh, Columbia Terrace, um, that long slender, uh, addition off the side of the building, that's the service entrance. So people are gonna come in and, and pull right in there, and then, uh, swing through the back of the building. So there's a, um, a door on the, on that, uh, east side, uh, that opens up and all the vehicles will enter from that direction, exit out the, the west side, come up, and then obviously they'll, they'll swing around and go out back the, uh, back the other entrance. Or they'll, they might, you know, take a right and go around the other way. Um, the exit, you know, we made it one way to accommodate, uh, the butters and, uh, you know, feel that, uh, that access, that circulation is kinda, uh, necessary. And if you bring that curb cut in closer to the existing curb cut, it's really kinda close for, uh, smooth operation.
Uh, Madam Chair, Connor's double-checking. Uh, I think the curb cuts have a minimum, um, uh, distance as well. For some reason, I thought it was seventy-five, but we will double-check that.
Where is the entrance? Where is the front of the building? It's fronting Quincy Avenue?
No, it's from Patton. Yeah, when you come up Patton, come in through the, you know, the one-way, which preserves the circulation that, um, Miss Santucci-Rossi and Jim Burke were talking about. And so that's the intent, is to have that circulation patent. And if you go into service, you can come in the more easterly, uh, curb cut, that's two-way, and that has the service canopy, which leads to the sixteen service bays. The part of the building that faces Patton Avenue is, uh, the, the sales showroom.
And we did verify it's seventy-five.
Yeah.
I, I don't know who designed the, the Jeep dealership, but the entrance to the Jeep dealership is straight into the service department and the showroom. There's no separate exit or entrance to that showroom or service area.
Right, but the building is designed with different things, sir.
So you can't use the same, same design?
Yeah, the Jeep, yeah, the Jeep building is set so far away from the, right away. Uh, you know, you, you have probably a five-hundred-foot lane approach. Um, you come in at the center and there's plenty of opportunity to go left, go, go right. When you go right for service and, and, uh, on the Jeep. In this particular situation, I mean, everyone's gonna be, um, uh, entering the Columbia Terrace and, and exiting the Columbia Terrace, uh, site, 'cause we'll have, that's the way the circulation's gonna be signed. Um, so the, the lighting issue, the headlight issue, I, I felt we solved it just by making that, uh, a one-way. We can, we can work with that.
Did you look at having the entrance exit just as, just central to the building and making it more of like a...
If it's, it's, you know, it's, um, it's just too short of a run. So you, you're coming in and then it, it's just a, uh, emergency vehicles would have issues with that. Um, the, you know, the customers would have the issues with that. It's just, you, you, it's only about, you know, the parking space is eighteen feet, so it's twenty feet and, and, and you, you gotta make that turn. You gotta decide, you know, which way you're going. You're going to service, you're going to sales, and, um, it's, uh, it's not ideal, that's all.
Would you say the, um, one-way is primarily, like, do you anticipate that users would need it? Is it primarily for, um, like, safety, delivery vehicles, or like...
Yeah, I'd say it's more of, uh, convenience for, uh, uh, sales customers and the like, 'cause, 'cause the sales will be over on that side of it, and, uh, employees as well.
So, is this, is this the, uh, the layout that was approved by the manufacturer?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, perhaps, th- this layout is approved by the manufacturer according to the engineer who's worked with the client in, uh, in this design. We did make it one, one-way, uh, in, and perhaps we can put on either side of that curb cut no exit, so that if you, you know, if you're on the site, you know you have to circulate to the other, to the other, uh, curb cut. But it, the layout does make sense in the sense of separating the curb cuts, also in terms of the arrival of the customers and gaining access to the showroom, to the, to the service area. So, I mean, that's one thing that could be done with, with the layout, is put no ex- no exit, uh, signs on either side of, of that curb cut. I mean, we do have situations like that certainly around town, uh, where you have no left turn, you know, it's clearly marked, no entry, no exit, um, and we could double that up.
Yeah, so it would be one-way in?
Right.
And you'd have clear signage designating it as one-way in? You can't elim- you can't eliminate it because of circulation requirements for customers or like, emergency vehicles?
From an emergency vehicle standpoint, it's, um, you have a clear, um, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree path around. Um, you know, emergency vehicles, they'll, um, they'll go in through the outdoor even, you know. So, it's, i- i- if you put it centered, it'd be difficult for, you know, uh, the emergency vehicle, be it a fire engine or that kind of, make that kind of turn. Uh, but in this particular situation, they can zip right around the site pretty easily.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking in terms of like, could you further restrict the one-way in to service and emergency access only? To try to assign it so that customers are going to that other entrance and those, like, your pedestrian customers are going, pedestrian vehicle customers are going to that main entrance, and there's clear signage designating that as one-way, and then also furthermore service emergency vehicles?
I mean, we could sign it one-way and emergency access only. I mean, that's, I mean, I think we could probably live with that as well.
Okay. Member Nokami, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, I don't, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Member Karad, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, most of my questions were covered and thank you for the comments. It's just basically whether or not that second curb could be eliminated or the emergency restriction, I think, would be good. It, um, the more signage or if there's any potential for other sort of markings on it, it seems that with a site that doesn't get a lot of traffic, likely that people are going to be using that for an exit even if it's marked entrance only just because it's closer to Quincy Ave.
Uh, Member, um, Madam Chair, can I ask a question, please? Is that twenty-four feet wide?
It's twenty.
Twenty, okay. Twenty feet.
Twenty is the minimum width for...
For emergen- yep, twenty feet, one-way.
You know, in Patton Ave, and that's really kind of the break in the grade for Patton Ave. Um, people aren't going to be coming up Patton Ave. We're going to be signing it to have people come through the dealerships. So, the people aren't going to be running up. They'll probably run up Columbia Terrace, um, and they'll run up through the Quark Jeep access road to access the site. Uh, signage is going to be able to dictate that. And, you know, because we can't use the Patton Ave area for entry signs for, because we don't, we don't have that property. So, signage is going to be down on Quincy Ave at the Quark Jeep area. And probably there'll be a Hyundai sign at the long front at John Quincy Ave as well, which can direct people to access through Quark Jeep. And if you access it through Quark Jeep, everyone's going to be using, swinging around and coming up Columbia Terrace, you know, tangling up on Columbia Terrace and coming in that, uh, first curb cut.
Is there campus-wide signing up here now that there are several dealerships under the, it's all Quark-owned dealerships?
Right now, it's just Jeep, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Are there any other dealerships or are they on the other side?
Other side?
No, I mean, the, um, the handout that we just got talked about five dealerships, but they're on different properties. This has two, this is thirteen acres with a, with two dealers, two dealerships. The Jeep way in the back on the largest lot. And then there's a two-and-a-half, two-point-six acre site next to Dunkin' Donuts. And then there's a three-point-nine, four-acre site that is the site we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Um, we do have the resident, um, would like to ask another question.
I just would like to say that, uh, we have been very good citizens as far as Mr. Quirk goes. We've never complained about the lighting that we don't believe is within, uh, the guidelines. We can mow our lawn at midnight, not a problem for me. I've kind of gotten used to it. Um, however, we have never made a request at all with all of these buildings that's been going on at the Viking Club, wherever. This is our only request that the entrance not be directly in front of our home. That's all we're asking. We don't complain about the signage, the traffic, nothing. We don't complain about it. We just don't want an entrance in front of our property. That's all we're asking. And I don't think it's unreasonable request of Mr. Quirk to agree to put the entrance in the center of that building. That building is almost in our front yard. If you drive up that street and you see where he's having the parking, the little driveway to front, and then you have the front of the entrance to the showroom, it's literally almost in our front yard. All we're asking is that the driveway be moved over so it's not in front of our property line. That's our only request. So, I ask you to please strongly drive up there and see how it would impact us. I know we're only two people, but we love our home.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I mean, it's not my site and I don't own a car dealership, but moving it, it's, I, moving it to the middle is, I would just get rid of it. I wouldn't move it to the middle. But still, they're too close together. It doesn't make any kind of sense like that. You're going to have one person coming in and going this way, another person going, it's, they're too, they're only going to be like six or seven car parking spaces away. And it has to be more than seventy-five and I'm going to put it...
Um, just not gone in detail about all of the things that I presented the last time. But it's thirteen acres up there. It's highway business zone. With all due respect to the prior speaker, Mr. Quirk has been a terrific neighbor in terms of providing fencing for them. Uh, they have a non-conforming use there. They were next to a junkyard forever. Flibbit's Junkyard was up there. Uh, this is an improved situation. It may not be perfect in terms of having a house in a highway business zone, which is a non-conforming use. But what we're talking about here in the context of site plan review is approval with or without conditions. That's, as we know, that's a case law. This is site plan review. It's a use by right. And it's, um, it quite frankly is a circumstance and a project that fits with all dimensional and density requirements. There's, uh, there's plenty of room to spare in terms of dimensional compliance, open space. Lot coverage is far beneath what could be covered. Uh, building coverage is far beneath. So, in terms of the criteria for site plan review and, you know, the case law on site plan review, it's completely reasonable and respectfully could be approved with or without conditions. We've accepted a lot of conditions. We have, um, you know, I don't have the draft conditions in front of me, but I think it was over forty conditions. And, um, we've agreed to make it one-way in and certainly put the signage. Um, I, you know, I certainly would recommend that to Mr. Quirk in good faith and, um, we've talked about it here tonight. Put signage on the inside of the parking lot that says, uh, "No Exit." Uh, and I think that given the zone, given the entitlements as a use by right, um, we've got a very reasonable proposal. And as Ms. Santucci-Rossi points out, you know, to move curb cuts, you start condensing the distance between them. You start condensing the circulation pattern. If you put a, you can't do it in the middle as Mr. Burke pointed out. It's not set back on, um, I think that site in the back where Jeep is is a seven-acre lot or thereabouts. We've got two-and-a-half, four, six-and-a-half. It's like six, six, it's over six acres where the Jeep is. So, that's got the central, it's got the central drive-in, but it's got a vast parking area in front of it. Thank you.
My last thought on this curb location is if customers are coming in from the back, then from a consumer standpoint, obviously, I don't know anything about dealerships, but it doesn't appear to me that it would be that much of an impact to go in in that back entrance instead of the front one. And so, the question is whether you would agree to a condition that says that you would only have the one entrance unless the fire chief said that you needed to have two for fire safety reasons?
I'm not able to answer that. I don't have the authority or the discussions with the manufacturer. And, um, it's, you know, it's unfortunate that we would have to, um, go back and come back. And, um, so, I think, you know, under the present circumstances with the signage and saying no, no exit, um, you know, I don't know what else we can do.
Thank you for your answer.
If I may, 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 if this is something that needs to go back to the manufacturer, then, um, we can't reach agreement, then we should continue it. If Frank can't, um, you know, if Frank can't answer for that and that has to go back, then we're going to be going all night.
So, is the request puts up signage that says emergency entry only?
I think that was only a recommendation that I was wondering could be made to try to further, like, if the entrance has to be there, like, how do you, how do you, like, really have it not be an active entrance? Um, trying to find some sort of balance. Now, I don't know if the butler would even agree to that. That was just kind of, um, what I had thought. And I don't know, you know, to further, like, if you were to shift the one-way entrance in as close as you could to that property line, um, on the abutting prop, like, shift it even over more and swoop it more in like a one-way? Like, make it even more, um, make it even more difficult for someone to come out of it because it is really swooped into the site? Like, if you, that would pull the entrance a little bit further away from, directly across from their house? But technically, I sketched it on this and I don't even know if Patton Ave is... It is coming up right here. Do you want to see what I'm talking about?
Are you talking about pulling it closer to Quincy?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
No?
It's just Patton Ave is very steep and then it gets to a point where like...
Right.
I don't want, I, that was the whole thing on the original report about having people turning, um, into the site on the hill? Like, get them up and then have them turn?
Yeah, I mean...
That was my goal, anyway.
Right. And I'm just thinking if they're coming up the hill and they're turning into the site in a one-way motion, you might have more ability to... Just trying to see if we can come to some sort of compromise here or if we have to continue it. And I know time is getting late, so, I guess I'll, I guess I'll leave it up, you know. What do you want to do, turning around?
Yeah, I'm not an engineer. I'm just a lawyer and, you know, didn't participate in the design. Jim is, uh, trying to reach someone to see if, um, if there's anything that can be redesigned here. So, um, you know, we, we have a pretty straightforward, um, development. And I think even the staff report had referred to it as straightforward. And it's unfortunate to get, um, tied up on this issue without answers and then wait another month. So, um, we'll try to get an answer.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Member Grove?
Available to Hill Ave?
So, they, I'm sorry.
Is any access available to Hill Ave?
Again, this is just from observation perspective. I think that it's too steep. If you look at the grade, yeah, if you look at, if you look at the grade on the grading and drainage plan, it goes from fifty-six to forty-six. So, all of the drainage goes to the cul-de-sacs in the back. And then it drops off to Hill Ave. So, I think, um, I think just trying to use Columbia is a challenge enough because that's pretty steep.
Do we want to cable this and pick the other thing?
I was going to ask if we could, um, I don't know, I don't know the logistics of that, but yeah, if we want to pause it and... All right, why don't we, why don't we pause this discussion and take it up at the, we'll just move it to the end of the meeting and take up the next and final public hearing on our agenda. If that's all right. Um, and that would be fifteen-seventy-nine Washington Street, special permit and site plan review for Harmony Contract Furniture LLC. It's the applicant, file number twenty-two dash zero four. That's fine. Uh, this hearing is already over. Yeah, I want to see, like, what's my stuff? All right, go ahead. Um, yeah.
So, I, um, good evening. Represent Christine Distacio in Harmony Furniture. And Christine, as we presented the last time, is a woman-owned business, started a business, does high-end country club furnishings and hotels, universities. Uh, she has been in business since two thousand and twelve. She's a Braintree resident. Uh, and, uh, her small business is at Garden Park right now and has been for a number of years. Uh, so, she has sought a site for her corporate headquarters and the property at fifteen-seventy-nine Washington Street became available. It's the former Frye Insurance Agency, which, uh, the building had burned down. Um, and, uh, we have a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property, uh, subject to permits. And, um, she's supposed to close at some point in July. So, we have been, she has diligently worked to assemble a development team. We went to the zoning board and received approval, um, in May for the parking because it's only a fifty-four-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot building. And, uh, the office space is approximately thirty-one-twenty-two. So, that triggered some parking that was unnecessary for a corporate office with four, herself and four project managers. They don't have visitors. You have to make, if you wanted to come in, you'd have to have an appointment. They work remotely on sites, uh, by computer with customers throughout the country when they're doing, uh, these furnishings, these high-end furnishings. So, uh, the property is located in the general business zone. There's a watershed overlay. We've, um, submitted the engineering and, um, that is going to be peer-reviewed. We've accepted a condition that says, um, as you know, it's, the water table is high in that area. And there has to be about eight-hundred cubic yards that Phil brought in to raise the level of the site. So, it's, um, it has, uh, some complexity to it. And, um, she's dealing with the site characteristics in a very responsible way, doing what it takes to bring the site up with retaining walls. And all of that is addressed in the draft conditions in the engineering report. And, um, the engineering is going to be peer-reviewed and we've accepted that. Uh, Christine has reviewed the draft conditions. We've accepted that as a condition of approval. If the peer review comes back with, uh, other conditions in addition to the seventy conditions that, no, sixty-eight that we currently have, then, um, we will work with those, any kind of additional requirements. Um, the building is beautiful. It's a tremendous addition in the general business zone. Um, when you look at design and you look at finishes, this has redwood finishes, earth tones, pewter gray, metal finishes. Um, she has spared nothing in terms of the look of the building. Um, I think it's a building, a corporate headquarters that Braintree will be very proud of for a small business. And, um, and she should be very proud of her business and what she's done to really develop this site and develop a really aesthetic product for the town and for her, for her business. And in addition to the design of the building, there is, uh, pretty generous landscaping, very aesthetic landscaping that's also provided on the landscape plan. So, without, you know, further delay, we presented a lot of that the last time. Um, and just wanted to recap for the board. We've worked with the staff on draft conditions for approval. And we think that it certainly is, uh, appropriate for approval and would like your support in granting the approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, if I could just ask, Connor, I know you had kind of taken the charge on the staff report, but just if you can provide us an update between, I guess, just what you've been working on between the last meeting and this meeting? And just an overview of the, um, report? between the last meeting and this meeting and just an overview of the, um, report before us.
So this report was originally issued on June ninth and then revised through today, June fourteenth. Um, staff revised the staff report to include draft findings and conditions, um, with reference to numerous things that do need to be satisfied, um, before they can even put a shovel in the ground. Um, the applicant will have to go through a peer review, um, for the stormwater management system on this site. Um, that has been conditioned in a manner as to any changes do have to come back to this board. So regardless of what it is, whether it's a minor or major modification, they will have to come back to this board if there are changes to be made based on the results of the peer review services. Um, in addition to that, we have proposed several conditions in regards to site access, construction, grading, lighting, um, in addition to refuse removal and certain operational conditions with reference to the garage doors, um, landscaping, uh, things of that nature. So we have proposed this, um, with draft findings and conditions. Draft findings relative to the special permit for development within the watershed protection overlay district. The draft findings touch on the site's redevelopment, um, in addition to its conditions of compliance and the improvements that are proposed on site.
Is that it? Great, thank you. Um, again, this is a open public hearing still, so if anybody in the public would like to come up and speak, um, please feel free. Uh, otherwise I'll open it up to the board for their comments and questions and I'll start with Member McComme.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the, uh, post facto peer review, I, I don't think I've ever seen that before. Um, I, I can understand it, but I don't think we've ever done that. Yes?
To Member McComme's comment. So, um, we're in a, a, no, I don't wanna say the situation is in, in, in particular, um, unique per se, um, but we have a, a small business owner here that's looking to purchase the property. Um, and the time constraints that they have around the purchase and sales, um, really would have been delayed if we had pursued, um, the peer review based on this, this sort of transpired over the last week. Uh, there's a concern, uh, the chair has a concern about some of the materials that were presented and we've talked to Deb Keller about doing a, a cursory review of that. We're hoping, um, and we're optimistic that this is not gonna turn into one of those back and forth type things. Um, we're hoping she has no comments or minimal comments that Mr. Hardy can quickly revise and it can be shown to this board as a minor modification. So, um, it is not usual, um, but we are continuing to make sure that, um, the integrity of the project is upheld and the board is protected while working with this small business owner. And this is a, a suggestion that I put forward and, and spoke to Connor about working on, uh, and he did an excellent job of putting together the draft conditions. Um, you know, we talked about this Friday afternoon and he completed these yesterday. Um, I've reviewed them and I think that there's enough, uh, assurance in here. Um, if, if the concern is, is valid, um, and there is a, uh, problem with the calculations, that those will be corrected. And if they can't correct them, then again, the property owner runs the risk of, you know, her not being able to satisfy the conditions, which would not enable her to construct the building.
Right, okay. So, Mr. Marinelli, um, does your applicant currently own the property then?
No.
Or is it, it's in process?
It's under purchase and sale agreement.
I see, okay.
With a July closing date, as I recall, and, um, we have one permit and that, uh, appeal period will expire this month and if we're able to get this approval, then potentially that appeal period will expire within the time within which, um, Christine has to close. Uh, I would add, uh, because, you know, I agree with, uh, Member McComme's comment and this is a small site and really, uh, you know, again, I'm not an engineer, but it would seem like there's a limited amount of things that you can do to, to achieve what needs to be achieved to build the building. So whatever those items are that are, are gonna be peer reviewed, uh, you, you know, I think that, uh, Ms. Santucci-Rozzi has summarized it well. Um, it, you know, we know that there's fill, we know that there's retaining walls and we know that there's, uh, chambers, uh, so, you know, there's only so much you can do on the engineering with, with this site, I think.
Yeah, I, I know Mr. Hardy knows this, but your client understands this, right? This is first, highly unusual and secondly, of course, if there's things that need to be attended to, um, we're, we expect that to be done. I just wanna make sure you understand that.
Yes, I do understand, thank you for asking.
Okay, all right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. Uh, Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
Uh, thank you. That, was that the variance that issued? Is that the other permit that you were talking about?
Yes, the, um, the zoning board-
The parking.
Allowed the project to go forward with ten parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, no other comments besides, it's already been talked about, the unusual circumstance, but I, I guess I can understand where the applicant's coming from, although not particularly an ideal circumstance from her perspective either.
Uh, Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Connor, what was the size of the original building?
The original building on site, um, I don't have that information available as it was-
Now, I know the, uh, the state bylaw and I bylaw allow a rebuild after a fire.
They were over that.
Excuse me?
They were over that.
Time expired?
Um, you have two years to rebuild exactly what was there.
Okay.
Cubic content, like what, and whatnot.
Okay, so it's exactly what was there.
All you can do is rebuild what was there.
Okay. That's why it'd be good to know what the original plot line was. Thank you.
Well, we know it was, it's definitely bigger. I, I don't think that's a, a question, who might be able to-
Was, uh, of the opinion that, as larger in conformance with the setbacks and so forth, um, and the lot coverage, which we are, um, than-
My, but you're, you have an under-
It is larger.
You have an undersized lot too, right?
Pardon me?
That you have an undersized lot.
It is an undersized lot, it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot by about four hundred and sixty square feet. So, you know, the alternative is to do nothing and it becomes, you know, just vacant land, non-
Four hundred or thirty thousand?
Pardon me?
I said four hundred or thirty thousand?
No, it's, it's four hundred and sixty square feet short, or, I'm sorry, six hundred and forty square feet short of the required lot size. The required lot size in, it, um, in, in the underlying zone. The underlying zone is general business, which is, was six, it's six forty short of fifteen thousand. The overlay would be an acre, so that was pre-existing non-conforming. That came in, in eighty-two, which the building preceded that.
Okay.
So we did get a finding as well, that, you know, that it pre, a finding that it was, uh, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, but is, uh, a significant improvement to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Grove. Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
Uh, my question, sorry, answered in the last meeting, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I have, um, a couple of follow-up comments slash questions. On the site plan, um, and I don't know if it's maybe been updated since, but the site plan notes the same first floor elevation at the front entrance, um, as the garage. And I think on an architectural, there might have been a six-inch difference between the two and I was just wondering if that, if you could confirm whether or not there was an elevation difference between the garage and the first, the, and, main entrance, or if they're at the same elevation.
I'm sorry, I don't have the architect here, but I know there was a difference.
There is a difference?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I think, um, we should just make sure that that is reflected on the site plan. Um, and then, uh, with regards to the staff report and with regards to kind of what has transpired with, uh, the stormwater review, I did make a comment at the last meeting with regards to an infiltration rate. Um, and I did not give it context mostly because I, it kind of jumped out at me, but then also I've had, you know, thought that there might be further comments coming from the town engineer or, and further comments coming from the stormwater department that might be more technical in nature and clearly they are the ones that are doing the technical review and, you know, although I am an, although I am a professional engineer, um, I try not to take on a technical review of a project, um, but I guess that being said, um, my comment was not adequately addressed. It hasn't been adequately addressed yet, I understand that. I did not give context and I'm happy to see a potential option to do a peer review on the drainage. Um, but one question I have in the staff report, Connor, on the, um, where you're talking about special permit analysis section for the watershed protection district. Number three, um, I'm assuming this note, it says the watershed protection overlay bylaw criteria contains criteria that must be met in order for special permit to be granted. It says included within the stormwater report are a series of statements related to compliance of this redevelopment with the DEP stormwater regulations. Is that, that's a comment that you wrote, right?
That's a staff report comment?
That's a staff report comment.
It's not a finding.
Okay, and then the stormwater report is titled Project Narrative, right?
Correct, yes.
So in the project narrative, the only reference I see to the DEP stormwater management policy is that the, is that the project is not subject to the DEP stormwater management. So I think this statement-
Okay.
Is not correct. But I think that our, our review is to make sure that the site works and if we don't have anyone currently at the time that we vote saying that they've reviewed the drainage and it works, like I just struggle with the timing of that because of our responsibility and especially because it is of the watershed protection overlay district. Um, but, um, I do understand the small business aspect and I am thrilled to have a company like yours, you know, come into the town and I'm a small business owner myself, so I, I, I wear a lot of hats and I'm trying to balance what, um, you know, what I would, I would expect to, um, how a project would move through this board, so, um, that's my, that's my general comment. Um, is there anybody from the public who would like to come up or is the applicant like to add anything?
If I, if I may, um-
Yep.
Certainly having been before this board many times over the many years, I certainly didn't intend to, I guess in theory, ignore a comment. I, 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 without context, and, and I did hear you say that it was gonna get further reviewed, so I honestly, without you giving context, don't know what it is you're referring to. I, I mean, I did soil evaluation, I done four test pits out there, I found coarse sand all over the site. I used the rawls rates, which is what the stormwater policy tells me to do, so I, uh, applied an infiltration rate of eight point two seven inches per hour to it. Um, it's, for context, it, I considered this a redevelopment or a partial redevelopment. The existing pavement now runs to the rear of the lot, um, we reduced the size of the pavement. We did increase impervious area, so the increase is the building and I took and infiltrated all of that for the entire increase and again, reduced the size of the pavement. Um, I know as far as, if you're over two point four one inches per hour, you need more pretreatment, but it being a roof, it's already clean and doesn't need any pretreatment. So without, I guess, your word, context of your comment, I couldn't wrap my head around what, and this was not acceptable and to the point I went to both other engineers in my office as well as a few other people that do peer review in other towns just to try and see if I could get a direction on what you may have meant with that and amongst the four or five, six of us that I talked to, no one really could point me in a direction. So, um, again, I tried to address every other comment in the staff report as well as when we got comments back from stormwater and the DPW, um.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, I, I could have given more context, but I didn't wanna kind of go down a, you know, a more expansive path, but typically, you know, I, my experience is that the eight point two seven is really reserved for really great draining soils, really great sites that have, you know, like essentially the best A soil you can have, like a beach sand. And I think taking into consideration that shallow water, you know, shallow, relatively shallow, uh, water table, you're bringing in fill materials, there's ledge outcroppings on the site, um, to me it just seemed like a potential overexaggeration of that, um, rate that you would assume. Um, so without context, that's where I was going, but I didn't wanna take on that technical review. I think that purview lies under someone in the town reviewing and accepting the drainage design on behalf of the town and us just kind of reviewing that, so.
And I can say with honesty and quite honestly surprised digging the test pits, it, it was just that, it was coarse sand. And I know it's labeled as a ledge outcrop because, um, that's what the surveyor sees when there's a rock sticking up there. One of the test pits we dug was immediately behind that to just see what was going on and some of the, it was actually large boulders that came out of the hole. So we dug deeper there than in any of the other test holes. So, um, that being said, if, if that's what peer review's gonna be looking at, then I'm more than confident because it was just that, it was coarse sand, um, probably surprisingly better soils than I've seen in Braintree in a while.
Sure.
Not, not, close, but yeah.
Sure. Um, all right, I appreciate that, um. Does anybody on the board have any other comments or questions? Um, all right, so we do, I guess we can, we have to, if we wanna vote on this, we have to close the public hearing and then we also need a motion to accept into the record correspondence through, which, what is the date of the most recent correspondence today? June fourteenth. Um, all right, so, shall I entertain a motion to enter into the record correspondence, um, through the date of June fourteenth? Do we have a second by Member Grove? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Shall I entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Close the public hearing? Uh, motion by Member Crowe, do we have a second? Second by Member Grove, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? All right, um, so we have the draft conditions, um, which it sounds like the applicant has reviewed and is all right with, um, so the chair can entertain a motion, um, on this application.
Motion to grant special permit and site plan review, file number twenty-two hyphen four, with conditions as drafted.
We have a motion by Member Crowe, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against?
No, yes, no.
Member Grove's against, all right, so.
Four one zero.
Four one zero.
Thank you.
All right, so you're all set, um, the application that we had tabled to the end of the meeting. If you're still awake, please come back up to the podium.
Thank you for everybody staying up late. Thanks.
Good luck.
Oh, we opened for the, the last, the latest and greatest.
Last but not least. Well, but not least.
I, I-
Just that, I'll just make note that we are picking back up the, uh, public hearing for four-twenty-nine to four-forty-five Quincy Avenue.
I, I had the, I have the opportunity to actually eliminate that curb cut and, um, add a little bit more, uh, pervious area and we'll just operate with the one wide, uh, existing curb cut, um, in that fashion.
Alright. Okay, so we do have, um, the applicant has, um, indicated that they would be able to eliminate the second curb cut that was shown as a one-way curb cut and they will, the record will show that they're moving forward with just the single curb cut, um.
And we could, uh, accept the, uh, conditions as drafted and, and, and file a revised plan that shows what Mr. Burke reported.
Yes, yes, alright, great. Um, alright, so, the curb cut across from your property has been eliminated as part of what we would be voting on this evening. Um, alright, so we do need to, um, a motion to close the public hearing. I don't know if we, I don't know what order. Motion by Member Grove, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? We did a motion to enter into the record correspondence through the date of today, which is the fourteenth, still. Motion by Member Grove, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Alright, uh, shall I entertain a motion for applica- major modification to site plan review, decision filed fifteen-oh-seven, four-twenty-nine to four-forty-five Quincy Avenue?
Motion to, alright, motion to grant major modification to site plan review, file number fifteen-oh-seven, with conditions as drafted and the change discussed on the record to eliminate the second curb cut marked as one-way.
Second by Member Grove, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Alright, thank you very much, um, who would like to make the motion to adjourn? Nope, they're not on, that's it for our agenda tonight. Motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second, Member Grove, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Thank you all.